Call the roll.
Mayor Sirksina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
And Weaver.
Here.
Nice to have everybody here and accounted for as we continue this new normal of Zoom meetings for our, for our public city council meetings. Nice to have everybody here. Thank you. So we're going to have the young Jack Funk lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Well, actually he'll say it by himself, but we'll be there with him in spirit. Jack, nice to have you with us. And I understand you're a sophomore at Valley. Is that right?
Yep.
And what are you spending your time doing other than scouting in terms of extracurricular activities?
Um, I've been doing a lot of football workouts with my teammates.
Outstanding. Do I understand that you're a wrestler as well?
Yep.
Well, you're, you're a busy young man. Nice to have you with us. So Jack, if you'd go ahead and proceed and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and that is for, hopefully, routine justice for all.
Jack, Jack, thank you for being with us and for doing that for us, and we hope to see you soon. Thank you, young man. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay, the next item on our, on our agenda is citizens' presentation. Now, this is when anyone attending our meeting can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda or related to an item on the agenda of this evening. Is there anybody here to do that? If there is, please signal to Pete so that we can have you state your name and address for us and then share what you'd like to with the council.
And folks, this is Pete Decock, the Assistant City Manager. I'm going to be watching for hands tonight. And it appears that everybody we have participating right now is participating via computer, which means that all of you at the bottom of your screen for Zoom should see a button called participants that you can click. And then at the bottom of that window that pops up, there is a place where you can click a button that says raise hand. And tonight, so that we can keep the audio quality high and also keep people able to hear each other and avoid some of the inevitable people accidentally talking over each other. We're going to really try and use that hand raising so everybody can have their voice heard today. So I'll give it a moment to watch for hands that are going up. And again, as the mayor said, these are, this is a time if you would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda or related to an item. Okay, mayor, I am not seeing any hands that have gone up.
Okay, very good. Then we'll proceed to consent items.
Move the resolution.
It's moved by Eric, seconded by John. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, would the council please vote?
I'm sorry, I've lost my document somewhere, so I'd like to vote yes.
Are you, if you'd like to voice in your vote?
Council member Weaver is having some network issues. I don't know if he's logged back in yet.
One moment. Mayor, I'll let you know as soon as I've got Councilman Weaver back.
Should we just go ahead and proceed post the vote? And if he needs to come back later, he can, but we're really just moving consent items at this point. Is everybody else on and voted?
Yes, I can mark him as an abstention.
Okay, let's please post the vote. And that passes four in favor with one abstention, and we understand why that is. And by the way, for all of us and for those that are attending, you know, we're all in situations where we can have network problems, and this is just a fact of life for us. So we appreciate everybody's patience. I've had network problems here as well, so it is part of our new normal for sure. Okay, thank you for that. Again, that passes four in favor with one abstention. We're going to move to action items now. The first item is a resolution approving the city manager's salary and benefits package for FY 2020 and 2021. And council member and Mayor Protan Edwards is the chair of our personnel committee. If you wouldn't mind leading us through this one.
Very good. In your package, you have a summary of the work of the Personnel Committee in reviewing the city manager's performance over the past year. We have feedback to review from the members of the council as well as from the department heads. And the input that we got was uniformly positive. Very, very high marks in all areas. The bottom line from every feedback that we have is that our city manager is doing a wonderful job, and we hope to have him in that position for many years to come. In a lot of those very, very positive reviews, the committee is recommending a 4% increase to his salary consistent with the matrix, which would be a 2.5% increase based on the merit and a 1.5 cost of living to reach that 4% increase. So with that, I would move the recommendation of the committee to approve the Personnel Committee's recommendations.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. One just quick discussion point that I'm going to add that's that I'd like for the record is that, is that Matt's salary is in fact 9% below the average of comparable cities and the next to the lowest of our comparable cities that we measure against is a partial measurement of for over and above performance in terms of where we place Matt with his salary. So I wanted to place that in the record as well. Matt, just a job well done. I think that we as, as, as you've served us so well. I think we've been able to talk about other opportunities as well. And so we're grateful for your service. We hope to have you in that chair for a long time. And you're a young man, so you could be around for a long time, and that's great. Is there other discussion at this point?
Mayor, Councilwoman Judkins has a comment.
Susan, please.
I just want to let you know that I agree with the comments that have been made about Matt's performance. I will however be voting against implementing a salary increase right now. So many of our residents in Clive have taken salary cuts or lost jobs. You know, in many cases, their salaries were implemented at the beginning of the year. Our fiscal year, of course, starts July 1st. We're having this discussion with full knowledge of what is happening with our economy and with residents in the community. And I just think leadership starts from the top, and it would be better if we were waiting to implement this when we have a better handle on what we can expect with future revenues. So that, that'll be my reason for voting against it.
Thank you, Councilmember Judkins. Are there other comments, council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just brief. I appreciate Susan's comments on that. However, I do not feel comfortable holding something like this up. It is based off really what he has done in the past year, and not just the past year, several years. And we set a fairly low dollar amount when he came on, I'd say. He's still below, as you said, Mr. Mayor, the median. And again, it's what he's done. And to wait until we understand where this is headed, we have never understood where this has been or where it's headed. I'm not sure we ever will. And so to hold back something like this for indefinite unknown to me is not acceptable, and it's not a good message to send. And so I will be voting yes of this.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Are there other council comments at this point? Hearing none, would the council please vote?
One moment, please, Mayor. This is Pete. I want to make sure that Councilman Weaver, are you able to hear us enough to speak?
I am. I'm hoping that my voting capability on the iPad is going to work here, but I can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Ted, being the chair back on, do you have any comments? This has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item?
No, I respect Susan's opinion, and I fully agree with, with Michael. You know, at this time, we need strong leadership. This is the time where we need it the most. And I think Matt has proven that, and he will continue to provide us with strong leadership. And he's being taxed right now. These are difficult times. And, and so we're, we're really, he's being challenged, as all of us are. And so I think we need to compensate him for that, so I fully support this.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Well, seeing no further or hearing no further discussion, will the council please vote? Item passes four to one. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, John and Ted, the other members of the Personnel Committee that helped put this together. But John, really particular to your leadership here. This is a process that we have to get right. So a lot of diligence and study goes into this effort, and thank you for leading that effort. And we're going to look forward to moving forward here. So thank you, council. Okay, action item number two is to approve a pay request number seven for RDG planning and design on the Westgate Bridge enhancements, the amount of $1,770. Who has this one?
Your honor, this is Matt, city manager. I would recommend approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion?
Your honor, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Judkins. Any other comments, council? Hearing none, will the council please vote? That passes four in favor with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward to presentation items now. And the first presentation is on the 2019 Greenbelt Stream Corridor Assessment. And Rachel, take it away.
Oh, thank you, your honor. I had to unmute myself. Can you all hear me okay?
Can hear you fine. Thank you.
Perfect. So as you can probably, you probably remember, council approved an agreement for the 2019 Greenbelt Stream Corridor Assessment back in October of last year. So that assessment work was done over winter and spring and is now essentially complete. Marty Melchore, and I apologize if I get your last name wrong, Marty, from Interflue, he's here to present on their findings and their recommendations. As you listen to the presentation, I just want you all to keep a few key policy points or questions in mind. Firstly, Marty's going to discuss our recommendation called a floodplain boundary approach. And he'll kind of describe what that is. But what it does represent is a fairly significant shift in our approach to the creek in general. So when, you know, once he wraps that up, we'll want your feedback on that approach and kind of your buy-in on that. Secondly, Marty's not going to talk about this, but there is a question that we'd like some input on as well of private property owners and whether we are going to allow them to do work on our property on the waterways and the creeks on our greenbelt. So think about that, and then if, if that's something that we would allow, kind of thinking about, are we going to essentially make them adhere to our, what we're recommending in this, in this report, in this assessment? And then lastly, there's a issue of private versus public infrastructure and whether we want to shift away from our primary, really our sole focus with stream stabilization has been to protect our public infrastructure, our trails and our sanitary sewers, things like that. This report has quite a few projects recommended to protect private infrastructure. So thinking about if we're going to pivot away and also do private infrastructure projects, include those in our CIP, et cetera. So yeah, just think about all of that as you listen to this presentation. And then once we kind of have that discussion after, we can finalize that report. And the plan, it would be to bring that back to the next meeting for your, for council acceptance. So with that, I will let Marty take over and go into detail.
Rachel, thank you. And Marty, if you would just be so kind to state your name and address for the record for us.
One moment, Mayor. I'm going to try to unmute Marty here.
Yeah, hi. My name's Marty Melcher.
Marty, what's your address for the record, please?
My address is 113 South Main Street in Lodi, Wisconsin.
Thank you, Marty. Take it away, please.
All right. Well, I, I'll turn off my camera here, but I just wanted to say hello. Thanks for having me tonight. Matt, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm going to talk about the Greenbelt Stream Corridor Assessment that we did. So just a little bit of background on who I am and who Interflue is. So Interflue is, Interflue is a river restoration design firm. We do a lot of watershed and river assessments to try and help communities target potential restoration projects for their streams and rivers. And I have been doing river restoration pretty much nonstop for the last 20 years now. I'm kind of a one-trick pony that way. I don't know how to do anything else except restore rivers. So I've done probably 300 and some projects in my career. And as a company, we've done with just 50 people nationwide. We're a very small employee-owned company. We've done almost 3,000 river restoration projects. And that is about two magnitudes more than the next company down. So we are, we've been at it longer than anybody else formed in 1982. So what do we do here? We, and we didn't look at the whole watershed. We did a windshield survey of some of the upper tributaries to the Walnut Creek watershed. But we did do on-the-ground assessment of 13 river miles of Walnut Creek, Little Walnut Creek and the North Branch. And that field recon had two goals, to really characterize the, the state of the river, geomorphic function of the river as it is now, and then to identify potential restoration projects. Really fairly simple. Next, next slide. We use a variety of methodologies. Our typical Interflue reconnaissance methodologies collect a lot of data, took a lot of pictures. And, you know, there have been some bank erosion assessments done in the past. And what they said and what we said is that, you know, essentially the gist of it is that the banks are eroding, I think. Anyone can go out there and see that, but what we're trying to do is sort of quantify the degree to which they were eroding and what sort of trajectory the channel is on. Next slide. So alluvial rivers, rivers with the sort of typical floodplains that you see in the Midwest have some characteristics that are common to all rivers. One of those is that they, they tend to move around. And it's called dynamic equilibrium, this process of the channel kind of floating back and forth across the floodplain. This is a diagram of a river in England between 1840 and 1984, showing the locations of the river in various years. And what you'll notice is that the size of the river stays fairly well the same, but the location of the river moves. And these meanders generally move in a down-valley direction, so they erode downstream, and everything seems to kind of slide downstream. If you could have a fast motion video of it over 200 or 300 years, you would see all these meanders kind of sneaking back and forth, but moving downstream at the same time. Next slide. This is a picture of Walnut Creek, and so you can see almost the same thing happening here. And this is in a shorter timeframe, so same things are going on, channels are moving around. What, what you'll notice and what we noticed is that the channels are actually getting bigger as well, and that's an important point. I'll talk about it here. Next slide. And so, you know, that kind of process, that's just how rivers function, right? And that's how floodplains are formed. So when meanders erode on the outside of that bend, sediment is deposited on the inside of the meander bend, and that's what keeps that channel the same size. And that deposition of fine sediment that builds the floodplain is what creates that great agricultural soil that we have in the Mississippi Valley and the valleys of the Midwest. Next slide. Clive's streams, you know, are following a general trend, you know, of increased erosion following development and really the transition of, of our lands from prairie or forest to agriculture resulted in more water coming down the system faster, right? Ditching and tiling just gets that water to the river quicker. And development and addition of impervious cover surfaces speeds that up even more. And Walnut Creek system is following that trajectory too. But the good thing is that Clive has largely stayed out of the active floodplain, which is kind of unique, actually. Not a lot of floodplain encroachment and filling. And so there's, there's room for the river to kind of move around. I'll talk about bluff erosion a little bit and bank erosion. The difference between banks and bluffs is that the bluff is just when the river has meandered all the way over to the edge of the floodplain and is abutting against a higher terrace, we call it, higher surface. And so you have much, much taller banks. Next slide. Geomorphologists, we like to talk about how channels evolve over time. And urban stream channels follow a pretty predictable trajectory. And if you look at the top of the diagram here, you know, you've got a stable stream. And then things happen like ditching of streams, straightening them, adding more water to that system. And what happens is the streams respond by cutting down usually first. And so they'll incise downward. And then the next step, stage three in this channel evolution model is widening. And so urban streams that are in flux, in transition with development happening and, and the loss of prairie and forested land, you, you see a lot of channels in the stage two and three area, and that's where the streams are in Clive as well. And then eventually they, they get used to the amount of water that's coming down, and they can accommodate it. They've eroded out sideways and built a new floodplain. So that's kind of the way it goes. Next slide. That first process, channel incision, you see it all over the place in small, tiny little creeks. It can be very obvious, like where I'm standing in that picture. There's a clay lens there that's holding that, that little headcut in place. It's a small waterfall that moves its way upstream, and it may be followed by many waterfalls. Niagara Falls is a headcut. It's an example of channel incision. Niagara Falls is moving upstream at a couple of tenths of feet to half a foot per year in some places. Next slide. I should point out too that Clive was kind of on the ball. There are a lot of sheet pile structures protecting pipes and crossings and things like that. And that, those act as grade control structures to sort of prevent that incision from happening. So if those weren't there, you'd have a much bigger problem on your hands. So widening, yeah. So that's the next step. So incision concentrates that flow in a narrower and deeper pathway. And erosion is all about depth. So the deeper the water, the heavier it is, and the more, the more powerful that shovel is. Next slide. So Walnut Creek is actively widening in some places, and in a lot of places, you can see that a lot of sediment being moved around in bars and, and deposits. And the typical response is to just riprap those areas where they're abutting infrastructure, losing property. We're going to talk about some alternatives to that as we go forward. Next slide. Little Walnut Creek is widening, but it's also incising. Incision usually, you know, it starts at the downstream end of a system and moves its way up. And so the real active incision in this watershed is, is slightly farther upstream, right? So into the tributary. And the smaller tributaries are even incising even more. Next slide. So what can we do? What's the right thing to do here? What we don't want you to end up doing is riprapping the channel and on both sides. It's ecologically very destructive to do that. Erosion is, it can be, it can look bad to the untrained eye, but the river is really trying to tell you something. It's trying to accommodate the flows that are being sent at it. And it can only do that by widening and getting bigger. And, and that's not going to stop. There's probably more development that's coming. You're kind of a slave to what's happening upstream, right? You, you can't control the amount of development that's going on outside your borders, generally speaking. And then we have climate change, and you know, we're already getting many more inches, almost 10 more inches a year than we used to 20 years ago. And that's probably going to double or triple in the next 50 years. So we may be looking at 50 plus inches, 60 plus inches of rain a year in the Midwest here. And that translates into bigger rivers. And so if you lock these channels in place by, by riprapping them on, on both sides in a widespread fashion, you're, you're going to create flooding problems. These rivers need to be able to adjust on their own. So one way to prevent incision from happening is to install grade controls. The blue line on the top right there is, is an example. So you can put a grade control in that's buried. No one would ever see it. It looks like a riffle in the stream. And it's buried across the floodplain so that if the river moves around, which it's want to do, it'll never fall off of that grade control. Another thing we can, we'll talk about later, I won't talk about it now, is floodplain boundary, setting a floodplain boundary. And then riparian vegetation management's important as well. Next slide. So gray controls, like I said, the top right picture is a picture of a Pipe protection project that we did in Milwaukee. So the The pipe is under that riffle. It's made to look like a natural riffle. Fish can get through it and pass over it. And no one even knows that it's not a natural currents. Like I said earlier, you have these great control structures, these sheet pile structures in various places along the creek, which is great. One really simple and cheap project you can do is to Build this kind of natural looking riffle over those structures to get fish passage. And then maybe a few more where the stream is actively incising in places where you don't have pipes. Next slide. Gray control really helps to prevent in for other infrastructure problems from popping up later. There are some streams, these tributaries that are really actively incising. This one on the right here Is a trib to Little Walnut and it was probably pre-settlement, maybe just a swale. Might have been a tiny little creek that was a foot deep and you could hop across it. Now it's ten feet deep and about twenty-five, thirty feet across. And so it's in the process of gullwing right now, heading toward some developments. And so in places like that, It it's important to try and get a handle on that now, so it doesn't become a bigger problem later because it's certainly So and and those can be tackled by installing great control structures at various places in those systems. Next slide. Bank erosion, you know, certainly sometimes when you have infrastructure to protect, But it makes sense to to do riprap treatment or stone toe treatment on a specific area. And that's fine. We do it a lot. The picture on the left, lower left is a is a stone toe with bioengineering on the upper part of the bank. And that can help save money by reducing rock costs. It also looks better aesthetically and is much better from an ecological perspective. And then the top right is just, you know, that it's a encapsulated soil treatment where we're constructing a new bank with These erode or their bioengineering fibers are made out of coconut husks, actually. And they're fully biodegradable. So next slide. Just specifically a couple of spots of the aquatic center, there is One of these sheet pile structures in that area could do a great control riffle there. There's the pink line on that middle photo is what I'm going to talk about later, this floodplain stabilization where you're basically putting Giving it kind of an end game, not letting the river get over that far, but you are letting the river move around within a confined space. And then potentially some great control structures and some spot treatments for bank stabilization. Next slide. I won't get into the weeds too much here. So geomorphic sustainability recommendations. There are, it's fairly simple to conduct a channel migration zone analysis. So that's Really just augmenting what we just did and and looking at where the river is gonna go. So you can kind of help predict where it might make sense to stabilize. You don't want to stabilize a bank Where the river is actually moving away from that bank. And that's it's quite simply. Some coordination to develop a trails plan. Move existing infrastructure out of that channel migration zone and maybe do some restoration projects that incorporate that trail development. Improve stormwater management is always a good thing. Using those projects to try and get infiltration, increase the base flow of the stream and decrease the Surface runoff that's going into those places. And then replace existing concrete and rock projects with Some bioengineering bank stabilization methods where appropriate. And then for future development, always maintaining and establishing a a good riparian buffer. And then following guidance for new development reviews, keeping infrastructure outside of that channel migration zone, Eliminating direct stormwater discharges, retaining of riparian vegetated buffer and Examine scour death scour depth potentials for things like bridges and crops. Next slide. Governance recommendations. So extend the scope of the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority. Expand the existing green belt, continue to promote naturalized riparian spaces. Becoming more and more important for people as the years go on here. Community engagement, educational signage is always good. People don't often understand What we're doing with these restoration projects sometimes and just a little bit of science. Education opportunities, grab those when you can. And then develop invasive species management plan. That's pretty important nowadays. When I started in this business, there was reed canary grass was about the only thing we had to worry about, maybe buckhorn. Now we have dozens and dozens of basic plants to deal with. So next slide. Getting close to the end here. So one of the things I wanted to talk about in a little detail was this floodplain boundary method. So How do we protect our infrastructure? And also let the river get bigger over time as we get more rainfall. The way to do that is basically just burying a trench of rock, to put it simply. It it's a little bit more complicated than that, but On the top diagram, on the left side of that, there's this floodplain boundary stone. So you you dig a trench, you put rock in there. And then the river may or may not migrate over to that boundary and and then it stops. And starts to move back the other direction and and it can move down along that that trench That only becomes exposed for a short time. And so vegetation, as the river migrates downstream, the vegetation will follow it. Because if you remember, when the river erodes, there's always deposition that follows. So There's deposition on the inside of the meander bin. If you go to time period C, and which is the third one from the left On the bottom, you can see that there's some bar development on the downstream side of of the meander. But then also, as the meander moves downstream to the bottom of the page, the area behind it also Revegetates as well as sediment deposits there too. So You're just translating it downstream. Next slide. There are a couple of spots where you could do Full-on channel restoration, taking a ditch, straightened section and meandering it. This can help with flood control. You can gain some flood capacity there. It's aesthetically more of that natural aesthetic and Really looks great in in urban corridors. And great places for walk paths, etc. Next slide. You can build a new stream out of anywhere. We can do that really, but there are also a lot of relic channels Around that you can recapture. Here's, this is one area here, east of a hundredth and It's a straightened section. There are relic channels out there. You can kind of see them in the topo. But they they could just be recaptured and the ditch section could be Turned into some floodplain storage wetlands. That would be sort of an ephemeral spring treatment frogs and toads would live in there in the spring and then they dry up in summer. It's the groundwater lowers. Next, next slide. Those are expensive projects, you know, they're big, they're big dollar projects. So they're, they take a few years of planning, obviously. It's not something you can just pop out and do right away, but Takes a little bit of finagling to get grant money, last sodium to to be able to do those projects. But they tend to score high in the grant, the grant scale. So one of the things we did was ranked all these projects. So We went down and filled out this form and ranked the projects on a bunch of metrics. So if if you look in that Just to the left of where Garrett's standing in that picture, there's some numbers associated with these various metrics, right? So This particular banks project on the country called Blue Lake Trib. There's some infrastructure at risk there. So it gets a five. That's a pretty high score for infrastructure risk. So obviously something is an imminent danger of Of being impacted. Can you get any flood storage out of that project? No. So it gets a zero. You're reducing lateral erosion and vertical erosion as well with with the project here. So those scores three and four. Little bit of ecological benefit, but not much from just sort of a spot treatment kind of project. And then and then they're ranked for potential cost and complexity. The great thing about this system is that all these numbers go into a spreadsheet and the spreadsheet can be used by the city managers To figure out Where the priorities are. So you can rank all of these hundred projects or however many there are Based on maybe just infrastructure risk, if you want to look at that first Or on a combination of a couple of metrics or the strongest and more most robust tool is is looking at them all together. And so It's a really helpful tool, really easy to use. Anybody that can run Excel can use it. So next slide.
That's it.
That's it. Oh, okay. Well, super. Yeah. So happy to take any questions if people have questions.
Yeah, this is a, this is Councilman Weaver. I I've got a couple of questions here. When you say on the governance recommendations, extend the scope of the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority. What does that mean? And and how is that done? I'm not quite sure I understand that. I mean, Susan's on the Walnut Creek Watershed Authority. So I I'm not, I I would like a better explanation of what that means to extend the scope. And then you also Say expand the existing green belt. Again, I I'm not exactly sure what that means. If you could Expand on that a little bit.
Okay, I can answer the second question. I might have to defer to Rachel on the first one. My Marin handled this slide the last time. But expanding the existing green belt just means wherever you have opportunities to Expand the riparian corridor with native vegetation. It it's a great, good idea to take advantage of that.
So what are we saying there? Are we saying we're we're gonna plant more native species where they're they're not? Again, I just don't really follow what you're what you're saying.
Well, examples might be, maybe somebody's got a parking lot that's doesn't need to be that big. And so you might encroach on that parking lot, take part of it out, some native vegetation there. Or maybe You're mowing Right up to the edge of the river or maybe mowing within, you know, Thirty feet, forty feet of the river. You could reduce your mowing costs and also Improve the ecology of that river corridor by planting native vegetation trees, shrubs, etc.
So so that's fine conceptually. Have we identified those specific areas that are possibilities?
Yes, yep, yeah.
Okay.
And I maybe just speak to that for just a moment. I as I, as I look at that, I view To an extent, what we're doing in District One with flood prone properties and getting things out of the flood plain As another way of accomplishing what they're talking about here. Maybe, maybe all went on that, but but that's kind of where where I see that headed.
Well, that that's an excellent pun and you're right on the money also. You bet. So Getting structures and and anything out of the flood plains is a good idea. And and there are also projects where you can Excavate floodplain storage space. So we've been doing some of that in Milwaukee.
Well, but Mayor, what you're, what you're saying we're already doing, I guess I'm just Curious if we identified parking lots or other areas within this For project that we haven't already identified, right?
Absolutely. And and Marty, can you expand on that or Rachel, other one?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Rachel.
I was gonna say, one example of, I guess, more than riparian part is up in the The Little Walnut area, there's some areas that we now own. But I think adjacent property owners are still mowing pretty much up to the creek edge. So that was one area specifically that they identified on the riparian Space. And then generally speaking, there's recommendations that we got from the Green Belt Master Plan. But they didn't expand upon those too much, but there's areas where we don't have as much greenbelt as we would like. So continuing to try and acquire some of those properties and yes, it also floodplain properties that we're buying out as well is kind of the intent with that.
So this really comes back to one of your questions before we got into the presentation and that is Allowing private maintenance on city property in the greenbelt. Is that, is that one of the tie-ins, I take it?
Yep, exactly.
I want to make sure that we're answering Ted's question. Ted, are we answering your question? Are we getting the answers that you're after?
Yeah, that, yeah, that helps. I guess the other question I had was, what is extending the scope of the watershed mean? What what does that look like?
The Watershed Management Authority?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the governance recommendations and I I just would like to understand what they, what they mean by that.
We didn't go into a lot of depth on that, but we're doing a lot of great work with the WMA for sure, but we can always do more. I know in Minnesota, which is where Mann's from, they have actual authority as well. So obviously we don't have that That weight or that pull in Iowa, but Any partnership opportunities that you can leverage is always a good thing.
But on that, Mr. Ray, if I can, on that, that is just pretty broad, open statement of extend the scope of Walnut Creek Watershed. Right? To say Minnesota has an ultimate authority, is that with legislatures or is that with the municipalities? What does that look like? I mean, I guess the recommendations need to have some specifics behind them, these bullets, not just some broad Open statement.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with it too.
Okay, that's good.
Rachel, I mean, that's, that's a question to you, I guess. I've got a couple as well, Mayor, if I can follow up after this answer.
Yeah, I mean, this We can certainly, I can certainly talk with Mann about How we can maybe Modify the wording of that to maybe a little bit more specific.
Shouldn't there be those specifics in this study?
Well, keep in mind that, keep in mind that this is a PowerPoint presentation and it's not, not the final report, so.
Right, but we're there. I mean, obviously the PowerPoint's built off the study. So I would assume the studies put together, the answers to Mr. Weaver's questions are here. We're just not You could expand on them and give them to us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or it's not been written.
Yeah, and I mean, along those lines, like, again, I think there's a lot of good information in here. It's it's very I mean, to be honest, a lot of it's over my head, but You know, I'm struggling as I'm looking at this and having any kind of understanding about specifics as far as You know, what projects are we looking at, short term, long term? What's the timeline? What are the costs? I don't have any sense for any of that out of this presentation. And so I just think Maybe some side of, some sort of synthesis of this data That that kind of breaks it down into here's what we're, here's what we're truly recommending at, you know, at a At a project level would be helpful. And and what what does that look like? What are the costs? And, you know, what kind of What kind of efforts involved in it and all that kind of stuff, right? And I just, when I read through this in advance of our meeting, I I didn't get any of that out of this.
Yeah, so the, you know, the purpose of this study was to Do a geomorphic assessment, assess the geomorphic stability of the creek, Come up with potential projects. And a a list of those in this prioritization metrics, matrix that we have. The purpose of the of the, this project is not to develop concept designs and You know, ballpark cost estimates for specific projects in the kind of detail I think you're thinking about. You know, that's, that's beyond You know, that's that's beyond the scope of.
Well, I'm not looking for concept designs. I'm just looking for a high level, you know, here's what here's what we're looking at, you know, from a overall cost perspective. I mean, it doesn't need to be down to the down to the penny.
Yeah.
But it's hard for us to make any kind of judgment on this if we don't have any sense for what we're looking at from a timeline or cost perspective.
Yeah, and there's a GIS tool that goes along with this that is Google Earth based. And so each project that had a form that was filled out for it has additional information, including some costs associated with those and and the ranking criteria. And then all that's all tied directly to the the management tool, which is is the spreadsheet.
Your Honor, this is this is Matt. If I could jump in here real quick.
Go ahead.
Clearly, we need to make sure we're getting more of the detail related to this report before council can move forward with reacting to some of these points here. And so we do have a draft report and we didn't include in the packet, but we should have. And we will share that with the council to provide some context of these projects. Because there's about, I think roughly about $10 million worth of projects that are outlined over a long time period. And we need to get that that detail in front of the council and kind of show the the bigger picture here. So I I think what we, what I'd like to do, if possible, is, you know, come back with this with that additional information and you can see the bigger picture that's outlined in that report that that we could have paired here with the presentation. That might have been a little bit better for this discussion, but we can definitely bring this back at the next meeting and have those further conversations to give the council more tools for this discussion.
Yeah, Rachel, this is Councilmember Klein, and that's kind of what I was looking for as well. How many projects are recommended? What is the metrics as far as prioritize those projects? What kind of a dollar amount investment are we looking at? So, Matt, I think we're on the same sheet of music with that. I'd like to see some more detail as well on the scope of each individual project.
Yes, I would. And I would say that, you know, even in the in the packet memo, the next steps portion, do talk about at a high level what some of the next steps are. I could channel migration zone analysis. You know, further research into stream migration opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. But but what does that mean? Where and, you know, then what kind of dollars are we looking at? What kind of funding sources could be available for that? So I think what you have here, Marty and Rachel, is is a council that's very interested in this topic. I think that's that's been pretty clear over time. But this group really wants to know more detail about, hey, what do we really do next and how do we start planning for it? And this is great information to start with. So Matt, to your recommendation, why don't we call a discussion on this item for now? And Rachel, invite you and Marty back with some more specifics at the right time.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more, if I may.
Mike, sorry, because you had a couple of things we got around here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know. I agree with what you just said. I mean, I think the Extend School of Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority, the initial question is, should be very fairly easily answered tonight with or without the study. Saying all that, if it's coming back, Rachel, have you reached out to residents of the Walnut Creek? I know specifically a few of them have asked to be notified prior to this being on the agenda and presented on. Have they been notified of this?
I guess there's a couple residents that are aware that there is a report coming, yes.
But Jeff Carter, for instance, I'll name him because asked for this specifically and to be on this call. I was, it was very shocked he's not. But to reach out to those individuals, to put out the study, I mean, I think to Mr. Mayor, I think it's very clear that the council is always and the staff is always over communicated. And I think that's very important to over communicate. And when someone asks specifically for information and such, and it's in, and then, you know, we failed to do so. It is you know, a mark on all of us that that we're not providing that. And so prior to this, I would recommend that all of the residents that have asked for this information are notified prior to the presentation and that they get the presentation and they get the study. I mean, there, there's no reason for that not to happen when they've specifically asked.
Okay, good point. And actions, good takeaway actions that could be implemented from here. Are there other council concerns, questions, comments at this point in time before we before we wrap this item up? Okay, Rachel and Marty, thank you, and we look forward to to follow up with you on this very important topic for us. But with that, we're going to move to the second presentation, which is regarding the Alice's Road Annexation Update. Doug, we're going to hand that one to you.
Doug, this is, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Very good. Thank you. So just a quick update on the progress of the annexation work along Alice's Road. As you're aware, we came to an agreement with the City of Waukees now a couple of years ago in order to try to reconcile some of the irregular boundaries in the area to provide for more orderly and efficient development, planning purposes. We were able to get the low hanging fruit, if you will, pretty easily between Waukees and Clive over the first year or two. As we got those completed, we are now working on a number of other properties, which are a little more challenging to address. In some cases, those property owners continue to have some reservation about being in the city of Clive based on some of the annexation war, if you will, that we had in that area a couple decades ago. Also, some property owners that are just simply content and don't really want to disrupt their situation at all. So our strategy, as we continue to work through with some of those property owners, is really taking a very patient approach, really trying to find the right time to have conversations and the right time to make the appropriate ask, whether or not it's to annex into the city of Clive or where we have found our most success is actually starting those conversations and then moving into a discussion about the potential acquisition of their property. As you're aware, a majority of those properties, particularly north of Douglas and the old coal camp areas, are going to be necessary for future road widening of Alice's Road. We have acquired three and and completed the demolition of those homes. You also took action to approve purchase agreements for two additional ones tonight. And I anticipate having one at your next council meeting as well. So as we are able to acquire those properties, then as the owner, we can then sign the appropriate paperwork to start the process for severance and and then annexation into the city. So, long story short, we're making progress. It is going to take some time to get this done, but we continue to stay on it little by little. And by the time that the property is really necessary for road widening, we should be in pretty good shape to have everything that we need. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Council questions for Doug?
One moment, I'm watching for hands. And in text, I know that Councilwoman Judkins is doing some of her work by text to me as she's trying to get my attention when she has questions. Not seeing any hands, Your Honor.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to discussion items from here. Thank you, Doug. Okay, the first discussion item is regarding Clyde Police Department policies in the areas of use of force, accountability measures for officers after force has been used, and prohibitions on racial profiling. And Matt, we're going to have you start it off.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, with the discussion both here locally and nationally over the last couple of weeks, staff felt it was pretty important that we get in front of the council from in front of you all tonight to to talk about the policies that we currently have in the Clyde Police Department related to use of force and racial profiling or anti-racial profiling in this case. And also give the chief an opportunity to talk a little bit about an accreditation process that we're in the midst of. We know this is an important moment for this conversation. We know, you know, as we reflect upon the last couple of weeks, it's important for us to look at, you know, the facts of where we're at today as a community and as a police department and how we can get better going forward. And so we really wanted to start this conversation with you all tonight and with the community about how we can do that. And so with that, I wanted to turn it over to Chief Venema to walk through the policies that were included in the packet and then provide some background on the CLIA process and then get a dialogue going forward with the the mayor and council and then anybody else tonight who would like to to speak about this issue. So with that, I will turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Matt. Chief?
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Your Honor. As the council is well aware, the criminal acts by one police officer in the criminal inaction by several other officers that caused an in custody death in Minneapolis last month has set off protests across the nation. People were appalled by the conduct of these officers. I was appalled. All of my officers were appalled. There was absolutely no excuse for this criminal conduct, and those officers were appropriately charged with those crimes. Since that event, our citizens are rightly asking questions about race and the use of force in all police agencies and how their police officers treat the people they are sworn to protect. I want to assure the council that the officers of the Clyde Police Department are out there each and every day upholding their oath to serve and protect our community while respecting the rights of all people they encounter. We have a strong set of policies to guide our officers in properly executing their duties and an effective discipline system to correct them when they don't. We welcome questions and critique of these policies because they can and must be improved to better meet the expectations of our residents, align with best practices in law enforcement, and reflect the values of our community. Our policies are living documents. They are meant to change over time as societal norms evolve and better policing practices are developed. We understand the need for change. We are committed to listening and learning. We will make positive change in how we fairly enforce laws and protect individual rights. Tonight, I'd like to introduce discussion with the council about some specific by least department policies on the use of force, use of force reporting, and our prohibitions on racial profiling. I would also like to update the council on the police department's next step in our CLIA accreditation process and how this process will help assure that the Clyde Police Department is constantly striving for excellence and upholding the values of the city of Clive. With that, I'll start discussion on some specific policies. There were three policies in particular that provided in in your packet. I thought they were the the policies that are most of interest at the at this time. The first one was 441, and that is our use of force policy. That policy provides for reasonable use of force. It requires that our officers offer first aid or medical attention to be provided to any arrestees that are injured. It makes a clear statement that officers that use unreasonable force or fail to give aid are subject to disciplinary action. That's policy also requires de-escalation. It also requires a review of all uses of force. Related to that policy is our 442, our post-force reporting process. This policy describes the process for internal review of all uses of force that are beyond just empty hand control. That policy requires reporting each time force is used. If an officer uses force to effect an arrest, they are required before the end of their tour of duty to submit a use of force form explaining the type of force used and and why that that force was used. That use of force is investigated by that officer supervisor automatically. Once an investigation is completed, that supervisor routes it up the chain of command, and that is reviewed by our police lieutenant. That is the secondary level of review. And finally, it's submitted to the chief of police for a final level of review. So as you can see, every time force is used, there are three different levels of supervision that are looking at that and critiquing that use of force. The third policy that I made available for you all to look at was 2511, bias-based profiling prohibited. In that policy, there's a clearly stated prohibition in any enforcement action, field contacts, or app or asset seizure for in by use of any bias. It requires periodic refresher training for our officers in in bias-based profiling. And as of this week, there was an addition to that policy, adding an annual review of any bias-based complaints. This was added this week because it is required by our CLIA accreditation project or process, and that was requested by our assessors during our assessment this week. That has been added to the policy, but I want that noted that that paragraph is not in the policy that was provided to the council because the policy has been updated since we put that in your packet. Related to that, I wanted to update the council on our CLIA accreditation process. CLIA stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. This organization was formed back in 1979 by four founding organizations. The International Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Sheriff's Association, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and a think tank called the Police Executive Research Forum. These agencies saw during the turmoil of the 1960s that there was a need to enhance professionalism in law enforcement agencies. They formed CLIA and tasked them with developing and administering a set of standards that police agencies can strive to attain. Accreditation is a voluntary process that agencies can choose to become involved with. We sign a contract with with CLIA to that we pledge that we will adopt policies and procedures, a comprehensive set of policies and procedures that meet their high standards. It also requires that we develop reports and analyses that the chief needs to make informed decisions. It requires preparedness training be put in place so we are ready to address natural or man-made unusual occurrences. CLIA can also limit our risk exposure because it demonstrates that internationally recognized standards for law enforcement have been met. And and this, the standards are verified by a team of independent, outside CLIA-trained assessors. There are five steps for accreditation. The first one is enrollment. We enrolled in CLIA back on December 18th of 2017. After enrollment, an agency moves into the self-assessment phase. We've been in self-assessment phase for the last two and a half years. During that time, we have been conducting an in-depth review of all of our policies and procedures and making adjustments to meet CLIA standards. There are 196 different standards. Many of those have multiple bullets in each standard. After we feel that we are in compliance to those those standards, not only do we have to make sure we meet the policies, but we also have to supply written proofs to show that we are doing business the way our our policies say we are. After a period of self-assessment, when we tell CLIA we believe we are ready to be assessed, there's a two-step assessment process. The first of the two. The first of the two steps, we are currently in the middle of. This week, we've been going through a week-long remote assessment where we've made all of our policies and procedures and all of our proofs available to CLIA-trained assessors. They've been going through with a fine-tooth comb and if they see something that they want us to adjust, we are making adjustments as needed based on their recommendations, such as the recommendation I talked about adding that annual analysis on bias-based profiling. The next step on the assessment is upon completion of this step, July 19th through 22nd, we are scheduled to have an onsite assessment by additional CLIA assessors. In this process, they normally physically come to your location, inspect your facilities, ask questions of employees, hold a public hearing to find out if there's any reason that this agency should not be awarded accreditation. However, because of the coronavirus, our scheduled assessment is going to be a virtual scheduled, or a virtual assessment that we will still be completing that third week in July. After that assessment, the commission will decide whether or not they will make a recommendation to the commission board for us for national accreditation. And if that comes about, we would be up for our award in November of this year in Little Rock, Arkansas. The last step for accreditation is maintaining compliance and re-accreditation. Our accreditation will be good for four years. During those next four years, we're required to complete annual reports to CLIA and to continue to put annual proofs of compliance on each of those 196 standards to make sure that we continue to do business the way our policies and procedures say we will. And then the last step is for re-accreditation. In 2024, if we want to be re-accredited, we have to demonstrate compliance through all four of those years and go through another onsite assessment. Your Honor, that concludes the prepared remarks I had and I would be very happy to answer questions at this time.
Chief, thank you. Of course, the CLIA process is quite extensive and so I applaud you and the department for being proactive on that and starting those activities, certainly when you did on your own. Can you just quickly, Chief, as you talk about, you know, the policies that we have, can you just talk through the process of ongoing training and education of our officers of these policies and how that's ingrained in our officers for their daily activities?
Sure. The change in policies has been a process. We didn't just change all the policies and roll them out to our officers all at one time. Through a program called Power DMS, when we make changes to policies, we provide them electronically to our officers and they have a certain amount of time to log into the system. They can do a side-by-side comparison showing what our old policy was and what our updated policy is so they can look and see just highlighted portions so they can determine what the changes to those policies are. The officer then signs off that they have read and understand that new policy and they do not go into effect until we are assured that the officers have all had a chance to read and understand that policy.
Chief, let me expand on that just a little bit more. And you're speaking of the policy changes, but let's go back to onboarding a new officer and I trust that they're trained on policies when they come onboard. I'm going to trust that. I'm going to let you speak to that in just a second. But then, ongoing, how are officers continued to be educated and reinforced in the policies? Ongoing, including change?
Sure. An officer, when they're newly hired, they go through several levels of training. The first level of training is at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, where they will be trained in Iowa law. They'll be trained in constitutional requirements. They'll be trained in search and seizure. They will get initial training in bias-based profiling. They will get the escalation training, physical training, firearms training, all those basics. Then when they've graduated from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, then they move into our field training program. During our field training program, they will rotate through two or three different seasoned officers and we have a program set up where we have task sheets that we have outlined all of the activities that a police officer needs to know how to do and important policies that they need to review and be aware of. And we go through those and we check those off as the trainee moves through the system. And also, they do a lot of training in the field. They start out with a training officer with, first, the training officer doing 100% of the work and them acting as an observer. And then as time goes on and as that young officer has picked up those skills and has understood those policies, the balance starts to switch. The new officer picks up a little bit more of the effort and the trainer stands back and just gives advice. And as they move through the process and everyone moves through at a little different rate, we don't have a set time that it's going to take to get through the process. But eventually, we'll get to a point where that trainee is doing all of the work and our seasoned officer is just following along and watching. Eventually, that officer, that seasoned officer goes into plainclothes and acts like a citizen observer with that officer, just as a safety net to make sure that he or she is doing the job correctly, is respecting the rights of individuals, understands what he or she can and can't do in the field before we turn them loose. Then as an ongoing process, we have an annual in-service training process by which our officers get both state-mandated training and other training that we feel is important to them. Some of that mandated training is firearms. De-escalation comes up every once in a while. Bias-based profiling is trained on a periodic basis. But in throughout an officer's career, they will continue to have trainings of that manner. The training never stops with us. It is an ongoing effort throughout our careers.
Thank you, Chief. I know that there's a lot of questions. So council, questions for Chief, please?
I'm watching for hands. That's all. If only I have a hand up from Councilman Weaver.
Ted, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So Chief, I got a whole slew of questions, but let me just start with a couple on the CLIA piece of it. Obviously, I'm a civilian. I'm not a police officer. So can you articulate what that means and why that's important to the general public? What does that mean to us as just a citizen of Clive that the Clive Police Department has this CLIA accreditation? Why is that important?
Okay. Yeah, that's a great question. The old way of developing policies and procedures would be the chief of that department develops those policies his or herself and they do research. They try to figure out the best way to handle things and they put the policies and procedures together. With CLIA, the standards for policies are based on nationwide standards. A lot of the best minds in law enforcement sit down and they determine the initial sets of policies and procedures that police needed to be a modern police department to reach for excellence. And another important thing about CLIA, as time goes by, every year, they are modifying their policies. They keep their finger on the pulse of what's important in the nation, what the trends are, what the best practices, new best practices in law enforcement are. And they change their policies and that forces everyone in the nation who's CLIA accredited, if they want to maintain their accreditation, they have to update their policies and stay with this. I will guarantee you that although it hasn't happened yet, CLIA will be working during their next conferences and their commission meetings to develop policies and procedures based on what you're seeing across the nation right now. They have a very careful process by which they decide what the best practices are. It would be really easy to make a knee-jerk reaction and say, based on this, we're going to return, we're going to change a policy and we're going to head this way. But CLIA-accredited agencies have the benefit of the wisdom of some of the best minds across the country to help us decide how we should be pushing our policies and procedures and where we're going for the future.
Okay. And you're saying that in kind of mid-July, we're having this virtual onsite meeting with them to finalize this? Is that right?
Well, it's, and it's, I haven't seen the format yet. I know what a traditional onsite is like. I was an accreditation manager when I was with Davenport and the accreditation onsites involve a team of assessors that come in and they have certain policies that they're going to check. They're going to do ride-alongs with your officers. They're going to do interviews with your officers to make sure that they ask an officer, hey, what is your policy on, how would you handle if someone was injured during an arrest? They test your officers to make sure that you're actually doing business the way you say you're doing business. Another part of that onsite is to hold a public hearing and a public call-in session. They think it's important. They have always thought it's important in the CLIA process to listen to public comment. If there is a police department that's trying to become accredited and there are some major issues between that police department and its community, community members have the ability to call in or talk to the assessors and tell them why or why not that they believe that this department deserves national accreditation.
So if we have this July onsite, what is, and assuming we pass it, what is the timeframe for us to get that accreditation?
By the end of the assessment period, normally, over the assessment time, they're here. If there are problems they find that can be corrected, minor policy adjustments and things like that, you work very hard during that week. They're here and you make policy adjustments. You make changes to meet those standards at that moment. When they leave, they do an exit interview and they let you know that whether or not the assessors will be making a recommendation to the commission for accreditation. They may say, we will recommend you for accreditation, but here's two areas that you need to have fixed before we make the award. A few months later, this year, it's going to be in November of this year. After they leave in July, I suspect we will know how we stand on becoming accredited. We then go in November for a hearing in front of the full commission. It's a 21-member commission of about half law enforcement, half non-law enforcement professionals from across the country. We review our assessment and they take a vote on whether or not you will join the ranks of accredited agencies.
Okay. I have a number of questions on our specific policies, but I'll allow others to jump in. I'll step back for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Other council members, questions for Chief?
Mayor, just for the clarity, because I believe as co-host, some of you may not be seeing that raised hand icon. So I'll just move through the council members here in alphabetical order. Councilman Edwards, do you have any questions at this time?
None at the time.
Councilwoman Jettkins, do you have any questions at this time?
Yes, my first one is regarding the public input during the certification process. How will we be letting the public know that that is a possibility?
Before the onsite happens, we're required to publicize to CLIA and to prove that we have publicized the hearing. I'm assuming that we're probably going to have a Zoom sort of session or a phone-only, but we will put it out there. We will communicate by our Facebook, our, the city's website. If the timing is right, we'll get it out in our newsletter that goes with our water bills. We will do a media release to, the same media release we use for major news items, just letting everyone know possible and hoping that they share that information.
Okay. I know one thing that some members of the public have been requesting of police departments in general is a citizen oversight board or some other way that citizens are more directly involved with the police departments along the way. Have you given any thought to how we might do that moving forward?
Are you talking about a citizen review of officer discipline or?
I think that is a part of it, yes.
Okay. Well, my opinion after 35 years in this business that I think there are appropriate times for a citizen oversight committee on police discipline. But I think that the appropriate time for a citizen committee is if a police department has demonstrated that they are either unable or unwilling to properly police themselves, then it's time to move an outside citizen's body in to take care of that. I don't believe that is something that the Clive Police Department needs. I believe that we have a very robust internal affairs function and we've got a track record on discipline that is, that is, shows that we engage in appropriate progressive discipline. When an officer needs to be corrected on a minor thing, we do that and that discipline is progressive. If people don't make a change, that the discipline gets more severe until such time that the employee may need to be separated from the department. And I think our record here has shown that we appropriately, we use discipline as an appropriate tool and that is effective. We do not, we almost have nonexistent complaints for either use of force or biased, bias-based policing. I think that we're effective and I think the current process works very well.
I have really appreciated some questions that we've received from citizen Tyler Higgs. And I really appreciate your comprehensive response to his first set of questions. And then he submitted a list of several more that he asked us to be prepared to talk about tonight. Do you have that list or will you be addressing those issues or what are the plans for that?
I don't have that email in front of me. I think Tyler, I saw that Tyler was... I don't have that email in front of me, I think Tyler, I saw that Tyler was here and I saw him raise his hand, so I'm sure if, uh, we can, we can address, uh, questions that he might have.
Okay, well, I didn't want to take too much time, but I am really interested in the first question on the list, so I'll raise that one right now. And that was a request that we consider banning chokeholds and strangleholds as well as hog tying and transporting people face down in a vehicle, what's your?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that, that question. Uh, although the word chokehold is not specifically called out in our policy, those types of holds are contrary to any training given to officers in Iowa in more than twenty years that I can remember. Uh, in fact, Iowa law would consider a chokehold a use of deadly force. Uh, also, uh, hog tying specifically is prohibited in, uh, a different policy, it's not one of the policies in front of you. But the policy on, that specifically covers transport of detainees, uh, hog tying is specifically, uh, prohibited. Uh, positional asphyxiation has been a known issue in law enforcement since the nineteen nineties. Uh, there was a time we didn't know what was happening, sometimes officers would struggle with someone who may or, uh, may or may not be under the influence of substances. They would fight to get them handcuffed and after they were handcuffed, the person would, uh, be laying face down. And if wasn't given proper attention, that, uh, they would end up, uh, going into cardiac arrest. And what it was determined was positional asphyxiation. Those arms are held behind the back and, uh, a person is laying face down, especially if it's a larger person and the bulk of their weight doesn't let them breathe very well. There have been, uh, times unintentionally where where people were left and they they thought they were settling down, but they were actually, uh, asphyxiating. Once we determine that, our training in law enforcement lets us, has has for years let us know that no matter how difficult the struggle is, once someone is handcuffed, we turn them onto their side or we get them in a seated position or get them to stand up. Because once someone is is in that, on their side, which would be considered the rescue position or sitting up or standing, they're they're much, uh, more able to to breathe. And I had that discussion with several of my officers and just quiz them that, you know, you know, what's the first thing you do when when we get someone handcuffed, even if you've had to fight? We we get them sitting up, we get them up on their knees, get them into position, uh, where they can, they can breathe. Uh, however, it, to make things even clearer, I have, I have no problem at all adding uh, language to our policy that specifically prohibits chokeholds. Um, that would not change the way we're doing business anyway, we don't use chokeholds, but, uh, in order to make our policy more clear, I would be glad to add that.
And just
I think we should.
Clarification for me, is there, uh, what do we call what happened when Officer Chauvin had his knee on Mr. Floyd's neck, what was that?
I would have no idea what that was called, that was not anything I've ever seen trained. If if you have to kneel on someone to hold them down to handcuff them, you don't stay on top of them. That, uh, that, that act was totally outside the realm of how a law enforcement officer should act. So there, there is no, there's no name for what I saw.
Okay.
Chief, I want to, uh, circle back just a minute to Susan's first question about citizen oversight. And can you speak to, um, uh, obviously to the, to the function of citizen civil service? And how that applies, uh, uh, here with department oversight, uh, disciplinary oversight as well?
Sure.
And and how that's mandated by state code, can you speak to that for just a moment?
Sure, uh, Clyde does have a three-member civil service commission, the members are are appointed by the mayor. Uh, their job is to oversee the recruitment and hiring process of police officers. Uh, we're currently going through a recruitment process. Uh, we ask them, if, they, they have technically the, the authority to go and run the hiring process themselves. Uh, we met with with them, they, and asked, I asked if we could run the process. I felt that between the police department and Roxanne and Human Resources that we had the, the expertise to, uh, run that process and they voted and agreed to let us run the process. But, um, ahead of time, I ran, I I laid out for them, um, everything that we planned on doing and what plans we have to try to make our police workforce, um, or our police force um, mirror, uh, our workforce in the Clyde community. Having a, a diverse workforce is important to us and we go through, uh, with the Civil Service Commission, uh, what we're doing to try to accomplish that. And if they're not comfortable with it, they have the authority by law to take over the process. Uh, the next thing that happens is when, when we get through the process, we report back to the Civil Service Commission, we, we let them know all the steps that we took, the, the tests that we've, uh, taken. Let me step back a little bit, the part, uh, part of the process, the oral interview process. Our Civil Service Commission members are invited to sit in on the oral interviews to help us choose the next generation of police officers. Because I can tell you from my experience, that's one of the, the most important jobs that I do as a, as a chief is finding and selecting the best men and women that we can to fill these positions. Because police officers are human beings and human beings are full of, uh, frailties and, uh, people make mistakes, people sometimes get into law enforcement for the wrong reasons. They have the wrong psychological profile to be a police officer. And we do our very best to, uh, to weed those individuals out who are not appropriate. We want people that have the right mindset coming in, who will make, uh, good decisions. Because there are, when an officer is out on the street, every situation is different. And we need someone who has good decision-making, making skills, um, before we, we, we turn them loose, uh, with, uh, what is a, an incredible amount of power that, uh, a lone police officer has on the street. So we take that responsibility seriously and we, we work very hard, uh, to to select them. Um, the Civil Service Commission is also a, a, um, place where if if I order discipline against a, an officer, that they are, they act as an appeal board for that officer, if, uh, I have suspended an officer, let's say for a violation and the officer disagrees and says that it, they thought it should be, uh, less severe. They have the option of going to the Civil Service Commission and laying out, uh, what occurred and what the discipline is. And the Civil Service Commission has the authority to, um, to change, uh, my, uh, my discipline, uh, up to and including, uh, termination. By terminating employee or if I, if I suspend an employee for a violation and they, uh, appeal it to the Civil Service Commission, the Civil Service Commission does have the ability to, uh, to make that punishment even more severe, uh, if if they choose so. So they are, they oversee, uh, our discipline process in that way. They usually don't sit and hear all of the, uh, any disciplinary hearing that we have, but one that's contested, they do have the authority on.
Thanks, Chief, for that, uh, for that answer, I just want to bring that up, uh, just to the point of some citizen oversight of the system that we have today that's fairly formalized. Um, but I know that we have other questions from council members, uh, other questions, council.
Councilman Klein, would you have any questions at this time?
Uh, Chief, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you for a very comprehensive overview here and some obviously a timely subject and some important matters here. You answered some of my questions with a presentation. I did want to, uh, touch on something, every two years, the City of Clive has a citizens', uh, survey that we do. And, uh, one of the questions, or there's a number of questions that our citizens answers is on policing right there. Uh, Pete, perhaps you can help me with this, uh, and give us some of the scores and maybe some of the responses that our citizens have had on, on our Clyde Police Department.
Chief, would you like to start it, then I'd be happy to share some of the statistics.
Uh, sure, I, I can say that, that, uh, as a, as the chief, I am very pleased with the, the numbers that I see. Uh, I, Pete, I, Pete may have the figures right in front of him, I don't. I know that we've, uh, been way over ninety percent, uh, citizen satisfaction and that, uh, we have a high degree, a high feeling of safety of our, of our community members. Uh, the only ones we haven't been able to pass, of course, was the fire department, but we keep trying.
Don't worry, Chief, the library beats you and the fire department this year, I think.
Oh.
Joking aside, uh, these are very strong numbers that have been more important than just a snapshot, they have been trends over time. Uh, probably the first one to notice that regardless of the performance, safety and, um, trust and fairness in government are all things that Clive residents on the survey have consistently said are very important to them, just as topics. With that context, on trust and fairness in city, uh, Clive has scored remarkably well. And specifically with reference to the police department in the survey that we were conducting in March when, uh, a number of, uh, peak sort of in their response to the coronavirus were starting. The respondents gave the fired, excuse me, the police department and the sheriff services in the county a ninety-two percent rate, rating, ranking as excellent or good. So that it puts in, and that, in perspective, just over nine out of ten people rated that excellent or good. Uh, beyond that, I I will have much more information and much more nuance to share with all of these different things that we study through the survey when we present the findings to the council later on this month.
Thank you.
Other questions, council?
Councilman McCoy, do you have any questions?
I do not at this time.
Uh, other council members, based on the discussion, if you have other questions you'd like to ask at this time?
Uh, yeah, I do, I, um, I've, I've got a number of them here. So, Chief, I appreciate all the information, um, on the use of force policy. I, I will say I'm, I'm still a little uncomfortable on the review process that we have in place. Um, it feels like to me that it, it puts a lot of power in one person, in the supervisor of the officer. Um, is that something that we can or should look at as far as, um, you know, something similar to where we have the incident review committee? And and maybe it's not for every situation, I, I mean, you would know better than I as far as if there's a tiered system based off of, you know, the, the type of force that's used or or what have you, I, I, I would, you know, I don't want to presuppose that I know the best way to do that, but, um, leaving the review of a use of force incident in, you know, one supervisor's purview, um, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with, and so I, I'd like you to expand on that a little bit.
Okay, the, the, the true purpose of an incident review committee is, is not, uh, disciplinary in nature. Uh, we see there in, in paragraph four, uh, the incident review committee is separate from, uh, the, the use of force. The purpose of that incident review committee is determine whether or not there, there are certain, uh, trainings or policy and procedure changes, excuse me, that we can, we can do to, to improve ourselves overall. Um, I, I personally am, am comfortable with that three-tiered approach that we currently have on the use of force review because, uh, although the, the initial investigation goes to the, uh, immediate supervisor, that immediate supervisor is looking at, uh, in-car camera, body camera, reading reports, they can, they can interview other witnesses. And then when that report goes up to, uh, the, the, most of them would go to the patrol lieutenant because, uh, uh, most of our employees are, are in the patrol division. And he has the option to review the same body camera footage, review the same in-car camera footage and do, um, more investigation himself if he feels that that the subject is not being appropriately covered. And then it gets to the third level, I, I have the same options to investigate further myself. Um, and, and we need to understand, these aren't, uh, these aren't dead, just necessarily a deadly force situation. These are anything where, you know, someone would resist, uh, arrest and it was necessary to take them to the ground to be able to get handcuffs on them, that's a use of force and it's very, uh, the information you need is readily available to understand whether or not that use of force, uh, was appropriate.
Yeah, and I guess I understand that, um, I'm, I, I still feel like it's a little bit of a centralized, uh, power structure there. So I'm a little uncomfortable with that, so I
Okay.
I want us to be open to looking at that, um, because I think that's a, that's an opportunity area where, you know, we, we may be able to provide a little bit more transparency for the public, so
Is there?
I'm not going to mandate how we do that, but I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm personally still a little uncomfortable with that, so.
Okay, is there a particular level of force that you believe should rise?
I don't know, I mean, I, not necessarily, again, you're the expert, I'm not, here, but, um, when we're talking about use of force, um, I mean, any use of force can escalate, right? And and as we've seen, unfortunately, and so I just, I, I just want to be careful on, on how we approach this. And I'm, I'm just, based off the policy that I read, um, I'm not completely comfortable. And I, all I'm, I'm not saying we have to change it right now, I'm just saying, I think we need to be open to looking at that and see if there are better ways to do it.
Okay, yeah, and we are so
I feel like, yeah, I feel like it's a bit of a centralized approach and and that can lead to problems down the road. So I, I want us to look at that, um. Beyond that, um, so on the racial profiling policy, um, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's a little thin. I don't think we have enough substance in it. Um, I would like us to look at, at beefing that up a little bit, uh, with a little more detail. So for example, um, there, there's nothing in the policy itself that talks to, um, you know, how we review it, um, what's the accountability? What happens to an officer who fails this, uh, racial profiling? Um, uh, you know, I, I think we need to have some of those details in there. And then, uh, I guess a question for you, chief, is are we coordinating with our neighboring communities about this policy? Because the reality is that we in Clive are not an island, right? We're, we're, we're in a metro here and, uh, a suspect should be treated the same in Clive as they should be in West Des Moines and Waki and Windsor Heights and Urbendale. And so, i- in my opinion, it should be, you know, lockstep between all of those communities. Um, and and I would assume that the prosecutors and the judges would want that, um, when they're dealing with, you know, these types of cases. Um, so are, are our policies in lockstep with those communities?
Okay, uh, and I'll answer your first question first, the, uh, that bias-based profiling or policing prohibited, uh, would, uh, would fold right into, uh, a different policy that we have on discipline, two-five-one person, personal conduct regulations. And maybe if I, if I provide you with that, that other document, you'll see that the personal, uh, conduct regulations lays out of violations of rules and the progressive discipline that is, uh, options that are available, uh, to the, the chief of police. Now, it's not going to say if you do A, your punishment will do B. to say if you do A, your punishment will do B. There are so many different combinations of things that could that could happen that we're not able to have a table that says if you do this, then this will happen. But it does fold right into our progressive discipline system where officer commits a minor violation, that may be just a mistake. It could go anywhere from a documented counseling up through written reprimands, through suspension without pay. An officer could be demoted in rank and up to including termination. Those are all options that I have, and we subscribe very much to progressive discipline, trying to correct little problems before they become big problems. Your second point is well taken. Right now, I'm afraid that a lot of departments may be rushing to change policies just based on public pressure. If we want to take a deep breath and try to get others together, maybe under a, whether it be a MAC umbrella or whatever it would be, to help us, to help guide law enforcement down the same path, I mean, that's something I would certainly be willing to to be involved with. And we've done other things like that with our pursuit policies. In the in the metro, we thought it was best that if we all have the same policy on under what circumstances we will engage in a vehicle pursuit, in which circumstances we will terminate. I think that this would be a good subject for us to all slow down, talk about, let's get it right together. Let's not throw some words in a policy to try to appease and have everything be different. It makes more sense to 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 be in more lockstep on important policies like that.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Chief. And so I would encourage Mayor and John, who's Chair of the MAC, we need to do this at a regional level. This is not something that Clive's going to solve on our own. We need the region to do this because, again, we don't want someone being treated differently in Grimes than they are in Clive, right? So we need to do this as a region.
Thanks, Ted. Good suggestion, and we'll we'll carry it forward. You mentioned you had a couple of other things, or I know we have, we have residents here and other folks, other attendees that have questions as well. So but I want to make sure that the council gets its questions answered and that we have that appropriate dialogue before we move to public comment and questions. So are there others?
The only other question, the only other thing I had was if I would like to see us be able to provide some additional statistics and numbers around, you know, the social profiling, you know, how many complaints have we had? What are the demographics around the arrests that we've had over the last decade or whatever the time period is? I think that's important for the public to know. And I'd like, and that's important for us to know as a council. So I would like for our staff to be able to compile that information and provide that to us at some point here in the near future.
Okay, and Ted, I can answer to some of that right now. One of the, one of the, again, the CLIA requirements, I'll keep coming back to this. It's a great tool. It helps to remind us to to analyze the right things. We are required, as part of our commitment to CLIA, to do an annual analysis of racially motivated complaints. And I can tell you that through looking through our records, in the last eight years that I have been here, we have had zero report or complaints made to our Internal Affairs Department, and we have had one complaint that was filed directly to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission in November of 2018. Iowa Civil Rights Commission, again, an outside agency overlooking us, investigated it and dismissed that claim. So we have had zero founded complaints in the last eight years.
Well, and Chief, and that's exactly why I'm asking for that, because in the decade that I've been on the council, I don't recall, you know, many, if any, complaints on this. And I think it speaks to the professionalism of your officers. And, you know, when we, you think about the thousands of interactions that your officers have every year annually with with our residents, and to have zero to almost no complaint. And the reality is, anyone can make a complaint, right, whether it's justified or not. And to not have that, I think, speaks a lot to your department. And so that's why I want that information out there, right?
And and as part of the CLIA process, there will be a final report that CLIA issues on us. And when we get that final report, we will make that available on our website, PDF of that, that people can get in and read a lot of detail about how the Clive Police Department is put together. You'll see statistics on on use of force. And like you said, we have thousands of interactions every year with our residents. In 2019, we we made about four-hundred-and-seventy-five in custody arrests. And of those in custody arrests, we force, reportable force was used two-point-five percent of the time. So ninety-seven and a half percent of people who are taken physically into custody, no force at all, it has to be used. And then if you extrapolate that out to the thousands of of citizen interactions that we have throughout the year, it is such a small percentage of the time that a police officer deals with a person that that force is is used. Also, our use of force complaints in the last three years, or in the last, sorry, we've in the last eight years, we've had only three complaints on use of force. And we have investigated all three of those. One was unfounded, one was exonerated, and one was not sustained. Unfounded means that the incident complained about actually did not happen at all. The officer wasn't there, or the person totally made up the complaint. One was was exonerated. That means that force was used, but the actions taken by our employee were lawful and proper. And one was not sustained. And not sustained means the complaint can neither be proved nor disproved. There was, by the scales, we couldn't we couldn't tip either way. So I think that's a great record when you think of the thousands of interactions we have with our citizens every year.
Chief, what I'd like to do is, and I'm going to end our kind of our council discourse on on this topic, and then move us to public questions and comments. But just quickly back to the kind of the metro aspect of this and the collaboration, the communication between departments, et cetera. How many of the of our neighbors are going through the CLIA process now?
In the in the Des Moines metro, the only other two accredited agencies are West Des Moines and Urbandale. If we are accredited, we will be the third agency. In Iowa, there's only ten accredited law enforcement agencies. We would be the the eleventh. So we would really be putting ourselves out there and standing up to say that that we want to be, have the most excellent Police Department that we can. We work, we're working very hard to to be the best for our city.
Well, absolutely. And the reason why I bring that back into the discussion is because our neighbor to the north, immediate neighbor to the north, immediate neighbor to the south, are going through the same process that you're going through. And really, I think that, you know, the process establishes a set of standards for conduct and implementation. And so back to the to the the direction about, you know, kind of the regional approach and the communication and the collaboration on that, I think that that could be one part of that entire process and effort to get everybody on the same page with with what we're talking about here.
And I think when you look at these really important policies, use of force, bias-based policing, I think you're going to find that our policies and Urbandale's and West Des Moines are going to be pretty close to each other because they all have to meet the same CLIA standards. So that is, that's our blueprint for for success and for being the best.
That's why I bring that up. Thank you. And great questions, and I think great discussion. Now, I know that we have that we have folks here that would like to comment on this and maybe and ask questions. I think quite a few folks actually that would like to do that. And so just a couple of points, I'd like to to keep our our questions and comments to a five-minute scenario per person. And when you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record. Ask your question, make your comment, you know, let's let's have the interaction. And then I would like to move to the next one because we'd like to really try to to hear from as many of you as possible. So with that, Pete, why don't we recognize our first question, and let's go from there?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our first question is from Tyler Higgs. Tyler, can you hear us all right?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you just fine. So if you would, name your, state your name and your address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Tyler Higgs. I'm at two-zero-six-three Northwest One Forty-Sixth Street in Clive. I know I've sent you all an email, and I'm sure you've all seen it. So I don't want to belabor that point very much, but I just want to, I want to thank the the chief responded to that email very thoroughly, very transparently. None of the points that I had were about our department specifically. But I think that there are things that we should probably consider. One thing that I didn't put in that email was making the police policies publicly available on the city's website. I think that would really help as we have conversations as a community on what policies we want enforced in our community, to know what those policies are. Councilperson Judkins mentioned banning chokeholds and strangleholds, as well as hog tying and transporting people face down in a vehicle. I think it would just be a good idea. When I think about this, I think less about George, what happened to George Floyd, and more about what happened to Breonna Taylor. Because what happened to her, the police did an investigation and said that what those officers did was consistent with their policy. And so I think it's really important that we get good policy so that that can't happen here. And again, I don't, I don't think that has anything to do with our our current officers or our chief. And I think less about the meme about what happened in nineteen eighty-eight and more about where are we going to be in twenty eighty-eight? And are we continually moving forward as a department? So I think just having a list of banned practices or things that you you can't do unless your life and limb is on the line, so that if somebody does that, it's very, very clear that that was not appropriate. Instead of, you know, they weren't trained to do that, or something like that where the officer could argue. The next points, I think we require de-escalation, and I think that we require officers to exhaust reasonable means before using deadly force. But it's not entirely clear. And so I would just advise people to look at, I think Philadelphia has a really good policy on that, just to add clarification to that, because I want to make sure that, you know, and I work in the schools. And so when we have a kid that has a behavior situation going on, we jump at the opportunity to de-escalate a situation. I'm sure officers do that. But just having that reinforced in our policy, I think, would be a good idea. And then a duty to intervene. So if you see a fellow officer that's not complying with the rules, you have a duty to intervene and a duty to report that to the supervisor, so that we're holding people, we're holding each other accountable to continually doing better. And then comprehensive reporting. And you mentioned meeting with other departments in the area to talk about policies. And I think this would be one to really talk about with them, because data.iowa.gov is a really good resource for all sorts of things. They they put out data on all of our expenditures, campaign finances, everything that you can think of. And I think if if all the metro departments got together and reported things like use of force or complaints and all that stuff into a publicly accessible database with appropriate information redacted, that would really help the public to know, well, where are the problem areas? How is Urbandale compared to Clive? And that gets to, I think, Councilperson Weaver's comments about needing to see the data. I think, if I remember correctly, it's Indianapolis that has all of their data publicly accessible on their page. And it's really kind of informative. You can kind of see the graphs and see where the hotspots are. And again, none of that's to say that our officers are doing anything incorrect. It's just the public accountability piece of, you know, being a public department and a public, public sector organization. And then having a policy that, you know, when deadly force is used, that the names of the individuals are released within seventy-two hours, that there's a follow-up on that. And that there's some sort of early intervention policy, so that if we're identifying officers that have had two or more complaints in the past month, or two or more excessive use force incidents or complaints, that we're getting them retraining and monitoring them effectively to either help them be better officers or to help them find a different job, you know, if that's not the appropriate job for them. But I just want to make sure, I think about Breonna Taylor, when I think about all this stuff, is, you know, her, the people that killed her weren't held to justice because the policy wasn't good. And so I want to make sure our policy is good. And so I guess that's that's the end of my comments, and I'll mute myself from here.
Thanks, Tyler, for for your input. Chief, I don't know if there's any immediate response to any of those points that you have, because I know there's an ongoing dialogue. So go ahead.
Yeah, there's a couple I can I can speak to right now. He's got a number of points. I probably can't talk to all of them. But on the first one, on the duty to intervene, this, although this is not a policy that I exchanged with with Tyler, I believe the oath of honor that that our officers take when they're they're hired holds them to that standard. But I don't have any problem on adding language to our personal conduct policy to make it clear of an officer's duty to intervene. I think that it is implied, but but that we could do, we could do better. We could use language, language that that I had put together recently. It is the duty of officers to intervene immediately if they witness an officer acting in a manner that is illegal and likely to cause the death or injury of another person. And then also the duty to report. It's the duty of officers to report to a superior officer if they witness an officer acting in a manner that is illegal or a violation of policy. I think a lot of that is covered other places, but I'm always in favor of making the language in our policies very clear. And again, it's not going to change the way we're doing business. The, we're already acting in that manner. The the other point I wanted to bring up, Tyler talked about an employee early warning system, basically red flags that come up on officers. And we do have an employee early warning system here in Clive. Excuse me, we've had this for a number of years, but and it is another one of those CLIA requirements that that I've talked about so often tonight. Each agency has to have a system by which management can become aware of patterns of behavior that could signal a problem with an employee. We use a program called Guardian Tracker. It's a software that we load information on, almost on a daily basis, on our employees. This includes innocuous things like training activities. If you've got a certificate for for a training activity, we upload the certificate and keep track of your training there. Letters of appreciation, we get a lot more of those than we do from complaints. But we we load those letters on their commendations, and we use those things when we're doing our annual evaluations. But we also add on to their uses of force. If you have a traffic accident, if you've been disciplined, and all negative activities are assigned to point value. And if in a three or in a two-month period, an employee gets three points, a flag is raised. And when that flag is raised, the supervisors look at those those incidents that have caused a red flag to be raised, and we dig deeper into it. You know, maybe an officer has been inattentive, has been in several crashes. Maybe there's a Maybe there's a, an issue with, with sleep or there's, uh, maybe they've had a, a couple complaints regarding their attitude towards citizens. Or maybe there's an underlying problem. Maybe he or she is having a problem at home that we can try to, to help with. But we're required by policy to review those incidents after the flag is raised and that, that is documented in an internal memo to the chief that, that we've looked into this and then we decide on whether or not a, a problem with that employee is received and what actions are to be taken. And that's all I've got on Tyler's comments.
Okay, thank you, chief. Pete, how about the next one?
Thank your honor. Our next comment is coming from Susanna Creighton. Suzanne, I'm going to unmute you real quick.
All right, uh, can y'all hear me okay?
If you please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Susanna Creighton. I live at 1464 Northwest 120th Street in Clive. And so I, I have never attended one of these meetings before. I am a 22-year-old college student. I apologize if I am reiterating anything that has already been said or discussed, but, and I will not pretend to know the hardships of being a police officer or understanding all of these policies, you know, completely that are, that have already been implemented or trying to be implemented. But I do want to thank you so much for having these conversations, even though they are so long overdue. But it is really, really difficult in times like this when there's such a lack of trust and a clear corruption of our systems. And, you know, I, I, I hope that in the implicit bias training for police, that it is, it is understood that policing was used to protect white citizens from those of color, that it is a system that has very often been built upon racism. And I hope that is recognized in this bias training and that de-escalation is emphasized so much more than the use of force, which I know you have gone over and I know that these policies address. I really appreciate Ted Weaver's statement before on having these connected policies between communities. And I also think that is very important on, you know, making sure that, with that, that you have guidance from other communities, mostly from communities that have people of color, that you are hearing their voices, that you are hearing what they experience, not only in Clive. And I will say that, I know you said that you have very few complaints against the Clive Police for racial bias, but I do think it's important to recognize that Clive is more than 80% white. And having these guides of people of color and communicating with them and cities like Des Moines and what their policies are, are very important. And I also appreciate that you did not want to, to rush this. I know you stated that this is not, not something to just be laid out and immediately implemented because it, it is super important to take the time to get these policies right. And the, the last thing I will say is de-commodifying the police. I think that letting the police like do actual law enforcement is a really essential focus and that they are overburdened. And it's so important to not, you know, they're arresting people for marijuana possession, arresting people who just need the proper mental health care that they do not have access to. And instead of, you know, investing and using police as Band-Aids for problems that have these much deeper roots, it's so important to look at using funding to invest in the communities and to invest in care for the people. And I will yield my time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Susanna, thank you for your, for your comments and for your thoughts. I think, I think much of which we, we can all agree on for sure. And the mental health is, is a whole other conversation, but hopefully we're going to get, get better at that as we move forward. So thank you again for your participation here tonight. Pete, who's next?
Yes, Mayor, next is Gina. Gina, I'm going to unmute you right now.
Hi Gina.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you. I actually live in Johnston right now, um, at 6837 Jack London Drive, but I was a prior resident of Clive. And I was a victim of a crime in 2017 and unfortunately had a negative experience with an officer, a Clive officer on two separate occasions in 2017, which did actually lead to a complaint filed by the Dallas County Attorney in 2018. That complaint was filed with Internal Affairs and my understanding the officer is no longer on the police force there with Clive. So my question is with your bias-based policing, does that include when an officer is responding to a call who may have a bias against a female who is the victim of a crime? Does that bias-based policy, does that, is that include?
Sure. Chief, if you want to respond?
In, in, in a crime.
Sure, and I don't know if, if, if you're, if you're on the phone or you're on a computer up on the screen, our bias-based profiling policy is listed in paragraph A. There talks about the, what those groups are. It includes but is not limited to race, ethnic background, gender, sexual orientation, religion, economic status, age, cultural group, or any other identifiable, identifiable group.
Correct, but I, I, it, it's not clear that if, 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 if the officer is biased against a gender, a female gender, and that, and that officer is responding to a call and, and the female is the victim and the perpetrator is a male, does this policy incorporate the victim? Or is it just based on if, if that officer is pulling somebody over because they think they've committed a crime and this is a female gender and they're biased against females? Or does this policy also incorporate if, if that bias against that female happens to be the victim of a crime?
Well, Gina, I, I know, we, we've talked before, I know the incident you're talking about, you're right, the police officer you dealt with is no longer with us, but I don't want to talk about specific details of, of your complaint. If you would like to, to contact me, we can certainly talk about it.
I'm not, I'm not.
We've resolved the issue that, that you have. It wasn't framed at that time as a bias against a, a female. But other than that, I, I don't believe I, I should talk about details of, on an internal investigation in a public forum.
Chief, not to interrupt, I just want to make sure we're getting to the meat of the question. And, and the question is about bias. And is the policy address bias across application? Whether it be against the female or whether it be against who's a victim or a potential victim or any, or anybody else. I, I think the question is, is does, does it address bias across the spectrum? And from what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes. The answer, the answer would be yes. Paragraph A, it specifically calls out bias against a gender.
Okay.
My, I had, my second question was with CLIA. I was just curious if their policy recommendations include the national best practices for sexual assault and evidence collection? If within CLIA guidelines and policies, if, if one of their policies recommends that the department?
I can't tell you what background information that, whether the CLIA specifically had that study or policy in mind when they wrote any, any policies that would, would be germane to that issue. I'm sorry, I just, I can't answer that at this time.
Oh, maybe there's a follow-up there, so make note of that. Okay Gina, thank you for your, for your comments and for your questions. Appreciate your participation as well. Pete?
Mayor, may I say something real quick? I'm sorry, Pete.
Yeah, go ahead.
On Gina's last question, you know, if I understood it right and I, I respect the chief's, I think he did answer the question, but I, just as a council member, I, I'd like to say Gina, I, I think we're on the same page as the chief, that there is no room for bias, period. And so whether it's biased on the victim or biased on the perpetrator, in my eyes, there should not be a bias. And if there is going into a situation, I can't see of a situation, if we knew there was a bias, that that officer should even be going to a call, let alone us having to choose which call an officer goes to, right? And again, chief's earlier comment, every, you know, we're all humans. However, we know of a bias, I, I am sure that the chief would deal with that. Very quickly, if we know ahead of time, and that's what I would expect out of, as a council.
As a citizen and as someone relying on the police to intervene for your safety, I had the same expectations as well. But unfortunately, I had encountered the same officer on two separate occasions after calling 911 and both encounters were the same result. And I'm still extremely traumatized by my experience two years later and have yet to receive an official formal apology from Clive. So there was definitely some bias there, gender bias, and there has been a history of some complaints against this officer.
So, so, and I apologize. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna intervene and I don't, really, I do not want to, I don't even want to appear to be unsympathetic to what you're sharing with us and what you're saying to us. We have to be very, very careful about talking about your personal situation with our department in a public forum. And I think that if we need to have further conversations, that we do that and that we do it thoroughly and offline. And I, and I hope that you respect that. We're, we're not trying to, to not be sensitive to what you're sharing with us. But I, but I'm going to ask that we, that we, that we not talk anymore about this situation and that we move on to the next one. Would love to meet with you and, and have the appropriate offline conversations with the folks that we need to do that with.
This is Ms. Stanger. If I might add, I, I think it is the policy of the city of Clive as well as, you know, state and federal law, that this sort of conduct, if it's discriminatory, is not prohibited or is prohibited and not tolerated by the city. We'd be happy to talk about if there were any violations of that. But as you indicated and as the chief indicated, bias-based policing, we all have biases, but policing solely on those traits is unacceptable in the department and in the city.
Uh, thank you Christina, indeed. So we'll move forward based on that. Appreciate that, that input as well. Pete, let's, uh, let's try to hear from as many as we can here. Please, the next one.
Mayor, at this time, I do not see other hands up, but I am going to go ahead and enable for folks here, if you don't know where that little chat function or the hand raising, again, that's, if you click on the participants icon at the bottom of your screen, then you should see a button that allows you to raise your hand. You can do that. I'm also going to go ahead and enable the chat function here briefly. So if you'd like to send me a private chat, again, I, Pete, if you search for me, you'll see me. And you can send me a note saying that you would like to make a comment. Mayor, if we could give folks just a, a second to make the technology work if they would like to make a comment?
Indeed.
While we're waiting on this, let me just ask one question that came up at the MAC meeting and that was concern about pretextual stops. Chief, do you want to comment on that?
Well, I guess that would, I would have to hear a very clear definition of a pretextual stop. I've heard it used in some ways that a police officer is interested in finding out one thing, but uses a, a different violation to make a stop. So technically, if a police officer believed there was in illegal drugs in a car and, but didn't have enough to make a stop and that car was speeding or didn't have any taillights, that the officer makes a traffic stop for that violation, but what they're really interested, what they're more interested in is that other illegal activity. I, I believe that if there is a true violation that the officer is making a stop for and that's considered pretextual, I do not see that as a poor practice. If you see illegal activity going on and the person is speeding away from the, the scene and they commit a traffic violation by doing so, I think the officer should be able to stop for that traffic violation, but also have in the back of their mind that, that other illegal activity is going on.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Sure.
Pete, are we seeing any hands here?
No hands, no texts at this point, your honor, but I'll continue to watch as we go through the remainder of the meeting in case there's somebody who was not able to.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. And so, a sort of point now, we have one discussion item left and reports for, for the conclusion of our meeting. We've all been sitting for two and a half hours now. And so my question to the council is, do you prefer a, a short break or do you prefer to continue?
Let's continue and finish up.
Thank you, John. Counsel, anybody else?
Yeah, I've been walking around. I've been walking around, so we're good.
Okay, very good. So then we're going to continue. The second discussion item is COVID-19 update regarding program staffing reopening and related issues. And Matt's going to lead that for us. Matt?
Thank you, your honor. So as we've been doing on a kind of a regular basis here is providing the council updates in terms of our response and kind of reopening of things, if you will, related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've got kind of three topics tonight, starting off with leisure services and really outlining. I know the last time we had this conversation, the council asked that we kind of outline what we, what are we going to be able to do this summer? And knowing that some programming would be modified as a result of the social distancing and some of the CDC guidelines related to the pandemic. And so I've asked Richard to kind of provide an overview to the council of where we're at on a lot of these issues in terms of challenges related to programming and things that we can do, that we're proposing to do in person versus some additional virtual programming that we've been doing over the last number of months. Also speak to the, the swimming lesson question that was introduced, that we talked about a couple of meetings ago when we made the decision related to the Aquatic Center. I imagine that the Aquatic Center discussion will, will be re-energized now that the, the governor has reopened, allowed swimming pools to reopen starting this Friday. And so we have some additional information as well to, to discuss that if the council so chooses, but I wanted to give Richard an opportunity to talk through that with the council.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel, mayor, your honor. I just want to maybe start going through this in the way the memo had it. So the, the first topic from a leisure, a leisure services perspective is the public library reopening. The library team has worked really hard over the last few weeks to get library services restarted and have had a ton of success getting people new library materials through the curbside checkout. Most days we're averaging anywhere from 40 to 100 people that are coming through the, the curbside checkout line and we're checking, we're from 300 to 500 materials out each day. So very, very, very successful. So we really feel like we're at a point towards the end of the month, targeting June 29th, a Monday, it's a short week before the Independence Day holiday, would be the first day that we could reopen the, the library to the public. A few of the kind of key things we're looking at is probably looking at 50% capacity. So when you add in our team members that need So when you add in our team members that need to be out there interacting with the public as well as patrons. We're looking at about ten patrons and five staff members that would be in the library at any time. We're also looking at requiring masks for anyone that comes into the library building. This is a discussion we had with the library board and there was support for that at the time. Also, looking at providing disposable masks for patrons that should not have anything. Also looking at keeping that curbside service available in case someone's not comfortable coming in or they don't want to wear a mask. Looking at adjusting the library hours in some way, keeping a combination of morning hours as well as evening and weekend hours. But still allowing us to make sure the library is clean each day in a way that we normally wouldn't have done in the past. Additionally, we're looking at maybe designating some of those hours for seniors or vulnerable populations like a lot of grocery stores and retail stores have done. Also looking at maybe limiting the amount of time someone can be in there and use technology to about thirty minutes each day. We really feel like that would give us the ability to get about the number of people that we've got through the library in the past, but not keep their people lingering there for a long time, still allow us to keep people moving through the facility without getting bogged down and keeping a lot of people out of there that might want to come in. And then along with a programming, so we're gonna be doing a combination of keeping up most of our virtual programming now for the next couple of months. But looking at ways to transition that into maybe some smaller group programmings in smaller numbers. Maybe about half of what we would have done in the past. In regards to the park and recreation office, we're looking at opening up on the same day as the library. Again, requiring masks and no public access to the restrooms. In regards to swimming lessons and aquatic programming, we've gone into a lot of depth and detail and you just see the kind of the five key points here that we want you to be aware of. And I could try to give you more detail if you'd like. But we believe that we can do a swimming lesson program that would operate from roughly July 6th to August 16th. That gives us several weeks and the ability to space people out and reduce class sizes so that we can meet social distancing guidelines. Keep people that aren't doubling up in the facility and allow them to move through there without creating a lot of congestion. After looking at all that, we believe kind of a worst case scenario, if we want to offer the swimming lessons, is about a $65,000 loss. That could be mitigated in some way outside of lessons if we wanted to offer opportunities for lap swing or even other aquatic programming. Each thing we can do, as we could slowly phase in over that July 6th to August 16th, would add additional revenue that would reduce that overall operating loss. And again, these are just predictions and estimates. We don't know for sure. We're talking to our adjacent partner agencies like West Des Moines, Ankeny, Des Moines, other cities across the state of Iowa that are starting to offer swimming lessons. They're seeing a strong demand, but not necessarily in every place. So we just don't know until we would open lessons up if they would be successful or not. In regards to athletic leagues, we're looking at starting our adult softball as well as our adult volleyball next week. For the first games would be softball on Monday night. Our team has spent a lot of time putting together protocols that would really allow the teams to still get these activities in and not really create, hopefully, a lot of issues or a potential to spread the virus. Some of the things we're looking at is no use of dugouts, no use of, no use of the bleachers. Asking any sort of visitors or people that are watching it to watch from the outfield outside the fence. And making sure all the players are lined up along the first and third base areas out there. In regards to volleyball, looking at ways that we can sanitize and bleach the balls in between all the games, making ways that just is really a positive, but still really limits the transmission as much as possible. And then the final thing is programs and facilities. This was a discussion that was had a couple of meetings ago, talking about what would we do if we didn't open the Aquatic Center, if we didn't offer swimming lessons. And so the recreation team has just done a fantastic job to really dig into a lot of the guidelines that are out there from professional agencies to the Iowa Department of Public Health and working with other park and rec agencies locally to figure out what we can do. And we really feel like there's a lot of great opportunities out there. And this just gives you an idea of some of the things that we can do, some of the things we are doing and things that would be possible depending on if we do the Aquatic Center swimming lessons or not. Swimming lessons are able to start up. We've got some great guidance on training staff on how to be safe with kids, how big the class, the camps should be. And really feel like we've got a good spot where we can still allow those programs to go forward, but keep everyone's safety in mind. One thing I do want to note, they're actually slated to start June 22nd and not the 15th, so that's a typo on my part. Working really, really hard on staff training to make sure that we're able to offer these programs in a way that's safe and make sure that our staff stay safe while offering those. So really, a lot of good work that we've been able to mine federal agencies, state agencies, local park and rec agencies. And then kind of beyond there, it's just a lot of things we're looking at from a virtual standpoint, in-person standpoint. And so you can see there's a lot of great things that we're trying to figure out. And I think we're gonna be able to offer this summer and really, really have opportunities for everyone. Whether you're worried about the virus and you really feel like you just don't want to engage in these things in person, there'll be virtual programs. If you're okay with that, we can offer in-person programs and really find ways to allow you to have those activities and those opportunities without endangering or putting yourself at too much risk. Then also kind of last two here are food truck Fridays and fireworks. We're tentatively starting or propose to start food truck Fridays in August. We've got food trucks and music lined up if we, if we need to. But we're just gonna make a call on that a little bit later in the summer as we know how things continue to progress this summer. Also, like we talked about fireworks, looking to host those on Friday, July 17th, outside the Aquatic Center there. And depending on what rules or how things go, it's, we're planning to go forward with the fireworks no matter what. Whether you could sit in the parking lot in your car or if you could find a grassy spot somewhere around there. So we think there's a lot of good opportunities. And should some of the programming and regulations allow, we're looking at maybe even opportunity of a little bit of music and maybe some food there as well. Onto shelter rentals in the special events building, looking at starting rentals up there in the next couple of weeks. And we're just gonna recommend that those be at fifty percent capacity. So allow people to get those those events in that they want to do, but just make sure that they're cognizant of social distancing. With all these things, we're gonna make sure we put signs up, ways to educate people about how to continue to stay safe out there. And we've been working a lot with local communities to make sure that the messages are consistent. From West Des Moines to Clive, to Irmenale, Waki, all the way up to Johnson and Grimes. So a lot of, a lot of coordination and working together on those things. I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you want to know something specific about some of the programs, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, Richard. And I guess, are you looking for guidance from the council this evening on swimming lessons?
Yeah, absolutely. We'd love, we'd love to know if that's something that the council would like us to offer and it's okay from the fiscal impact standpoint. Or if we don't do that and then jump into finding more ways to do alternative programming.
So that's about a forty-two day season, is that right?
Yeah.
And that would be swimming lessons every day?
Yep. So what we would do is run them Monday through Friday. And then a couple, a couple sessions, a couple hours in the morning and then a couple sessions in the afternoon and evening. So make sure the way we space them out, timing wise, that we don't get like, normally you would have had one class go and the next class is there before that class gets done. We would space them out so that one class could come and go before the next class comes and goes. So that's one of the ways we felt that we could do it while meeting all the social distancing guidelines and making sure that we can keep the facility clean and all the spaces that people touch throughout the center.
And the staffing requirements there are what?
So we can do it between, with between twenty-five and forty staff members. Typically, we would be looking at a hundred and ten people working at the Aquatic Center in a given year. If it was a fully open for all the programming and open as well as what we do. So a much smaller number, which we believe is much more achievable due to a lot of different things with a lot of the universities announcing that they're starting a week earlier this year. That's where we get a lot of our lifeguards, but we do believe we could, we could pull that off with that number of staff members.
Counsel, God's comments?
Richard, could you tell us how many swimmers would be involved with that number of lessons?
So it really, it just really depends. But what we're looking at from an individual group of lessons is probably in the neighborhood of four to five students. But then their parent or guardian or someone older would have to be in the pool with them. That's the way we've kind of figured out how we can accomplish that.
So how many total swimmers? What I'm trying to get at is a cost per, I mean, if we're spending, if it's gonna cost us $65,000, how many swimmers is that?
You know, I don't have the exact number of slots available, but I'm guessing it's pretty typical to a regular year. So there's probably a neighborhood of one to two thousand kids that could get swimming lessons. It just, it just really depends on how popular they are, how comfortable they are with that. But we could certainly kind of see what, what kind of response the other adjacent communities are getting for their pools and try to put an estimate together.
And so is there some thought to then trying to adjust the cost to recover our costs? If we have, we're estimating a thousand swimmers, then would that be like $65 a lesson or?
No, that was actually set up in a way to show you what the total loss would be. That incorporates our revenue that we would get. So the total of cost we've estimated to operate the pool is approximately $90,000 over that period. And bringing back in, you know, less than twenty or thirty thousand dollars in revenue from those swimming lessons.
To John's point, that would mean the cost to do swim lessons would be, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars. And then we'd need to divide it by the thousand swimmers.
Correct, yep.
It's a different light.
Richard, this is Ted. Have we looked at the option of having swim teams in there for training purposes to do laps? I was contacted by a resident today about the fact that, you know, some of the competitive swim teams in the area need a pool to be able to train and would be willing to pay a certain fee for that. She may even be on this call, I believe it's Alicia. So if she's on the call, when I was on the Zoom earlier, I saw her on it. And so she may be willing to comment on that, but that may help to mitigate some of that cost.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and the number, the sixty-five or sixty-five thousand dollar loss was, we estimated would be kind of a worst case scenario. And all the guidance that our aquatics team has, has seen in the research and the discussions they've had is that you really want to kind of ease your way into this. So the way we probably look at that is if the council wanted us to move forward with the swimming lessons, we'd probably start the first week or two as just swimming lessons. And then if things worked pretty well there and there weren't any major issues, then we'd start to work in some of those other things. Maybe work for open lap swim or working with swim teams like that, or maybe offering aquatic exercise programs. Finding additional ways to reduce that overall loss to the city and provide opportunities to get more programming in there. So I think that's absolutely an opportunity.
So in your opinion, you feel like based off of those different opportunities, that loss could be significantly less than 65,000. Is that an accurate statement?
You know, I think we could probably, you know, if things went pretty well, we're probably looking at a neighborhood of anywhere from twenty to thirty additional thousand dollars in revenue. Just to give you an example, the doggy dive that we usually, a lot of pools wrap up with, would bring in about $3,000 alone just with that event to offer as kind of a wrap up to any season, the ability. So there's definitely abilities, it just depends on the demand and the time we have and how popular some of those things are. But certainly could reduce that loss. Okay, so I'm just gonna say my opinion. I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask, there's also been a lot of demand in the past on birthday parties, private parties at the pool. Would that be something we'd look at, at hosting as well?
At this point, that's not something that we have looked at, but certainly something we could, we could definitely look at. You know, we just have to make sure we have the appropriate number of staff to allow something like that.
Ted, I want to, you were gonna indicate, well, no, you were gonna indicate your recommendation, so please proceed.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, look, if we can, if we can try to mitigate some of that cost, sixty-five thousand is a big loss. And I don't want to see that. But if, if there's a way we can mitigate that cost by reaching out to some of these swim teams and what Eric just said and whatever the other options are. I think we owe it to the community to provide these opportunities because there's just not enough out there. We've got to be able to provide these types of outlets for our community. And so if we can minimize the loss to where it's manageable, in my opinion, I think we owe it to the community.
Okay. Other thoughts on that?
Mayor, counsel?
I have a question about. Can you remind me what a typical year would look like? Do we often operate at an average loss or a break even? Or how does that 65,000 compare to a usual year?
Yeah, no, I can try to address that. So really, a facility like this, it's gonna vary from year to year with things such as weather, temperature, closures because of storms. So in looking kind of back in on some of the past years, we felt like the $65,000 was within the realm. There are absolute years where the facility itself will operate in the black and the city will make a little bit of money. But there's also gonna be years where we may not get any temperatures above ninety degrees and it rains a lot, where we're gonna lose maybe over a hundred thousand dollars. It just varies from year to year. We really felt like that loss was in the realm of possibility on any given year.
Okay. I think somebody else was coming in there as well. So and Pete, if you want to recognize there, you can see those hands coming up.
Mayor, I'm watching for hands. I'm not seeing, I take that back. We do have one from a constituent, looks like Meredith Otis. Mayor, would you like to respond to this at this time?
Hi, Meredith. If you want to share with us, please state your name and address for the record and welcome.
Yeah, my name is Meredith Otis and I live at 2569 Northwest 160 First Street in Clive. I just wanted to chime in. I know Ted had referenced swim clubs and I'm the president of Des Moines Swimming Federation. And Alicia is a board member as well and she reached out to Ted. I've had a few communications with Doug Harris as well. But I just wanted to clearly express, we would absolutely love to use your facility. We understand the concerns with COVID. We have a COVID policy in place. We have USA swimming guidelines that we adhere to. And one of the big factors for us is all of our coaches, our lifeguards. So from a cost perspective, we don't need, we really don't need anybody, but I'm sure you would like somebody there while we're there. And we're used to, we're used to swimming at very odd hours. Our practices are often six to eight AM in the morning or in evenings. We're happy to wrap around your programming and help bring that deficit down. So I just wanted to express our interest and partnership. And honestly, probably future forward, we've never really explored this partnership before. As we continue to grow, our program, we're always looking for more opportunities with pools. And I think you'll find your demand for lessons is high. Our demand for swim club has been high over the last few years and we expect you to see that as well for your lessons. And we've been in the Des Moines area for forty years, so this is not new for us and the importance of swimming. Be it lessons or be it with a club, we completely understand and support the importance of it. So anything we can do to help you get a lessons program going, we're also happy to do. Be it advertised or whatever we can do, we'd love to partner with you.
Well, Meredith, that's terrific. And those kind of collaborations and kind of out of the box things that help make us better. So appreciate your offer for that and certainly reason to follow up with you. I, I want to get a better sense from the council on moving forward with swim lessons and other opportunities with the pool aspect of the Aquatic Center. Need to understand the desire of the council, so. Yeah. Matt, Pete, however you want to do that, do we just need to come around? It's kind of indicated yes or no in terms of let's move forward or not.
Your honor, if each, each member would be willing to kind of weigh in on this and give us that direction, we're happy to start working on a plan to implement swimming lessons and bring that, that loss number down with these other partnerships. Counsel? This is Eric. I'll start off right now, mayor. I think it's a good idea. I do think we need to have activities for swimming lessons. But I do like the idea of mitigating those costs without the box thinking. So I think we're on the right track and think we'd need to move forward.
Thank you, council member Klein. Others?
Well, I would agree with that. I would like to know that there is demand for things that we're offering. But it's helpful to me to hear that projected loss is in the range of what we might anticipate in an average year.
Thank you, Susan. Others?
Well, in the absence of others, let me, let me speak up here. Well, in the absence of others, let me, let me speak up here. And I'm gonna throw a wrinkle into this and I apologize for that in advance. But, so again, I think we need to go forth with what we're talking about and provide the swim lessons, get the other partnerships. I loved what Meredith said, I think we need to look at that as well for the, for the future. And, and let's, let's look at those opportunities. You know, the governor just came out with a new proclamation, which I did not anticipate even, you know, two weeks ago, where she did not put a restriction on capacity for outdoor venues such as our aquatic center. So I would like to know from staff, you know, what is our capacity? When we're talking about family units with the six feet distance, because she's no longer putting a, a set number, it's not ten or fifty or a hundred, now it's just you have to have six feet distance. But in an outdoor capacity, there's no limit. And so we have a nine hundred person capacity in the aquatic center. I don't know what that capacity looks like, you guys are a lot smarter than I am. So what does that look like in the aquatic center? And then what does that translate into from a financial perspective? Because my whole reason for supporting the closure of the aquatic center for the summer was financial. It wasn't safety related, it was financial based. And if we can figure out a way that, you know what, we can socially distance and we can meet the governor's proclamation and still not take a, a significant financial loss, I, I think we need to revisit that. Now, again, I'm just one person and, and the other council members have to agree to that. But I want to know what those numbers look like. And if we can figure out a way to do it, even if it's just for six weeks or, or whatever, the public is clamoring for it. I got all kinds of people in my neighborhood clamoring for it. We've got teenagers who can't find jobs because they normally work at aquatic centers as a lifeguard, but there's no jobs out there right now for them, so they got nothing to do this weekend. And it's, it's feeding into this Campbell Park or Campbell Bridge issue that we're, we're having, which I know is the next topic, but it all kind of interrelates. And so I would like to understand what that looks like now that the governor has opened it up. So I don't know, Matt, you have any thoughts on that?
Matt, give your thoughts. I don't think it's as, as simple as it sounds, but Matt, go ahead.
Oh yeah, and Richard and I had a, had a conversation about this. And I know Richard can definitely speak to this and have some, because we, we figured that this might come up. And so I'll let Richard kind of highlight some of the information that he's been pulling together. Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in here. So, you know, when we saw that yesterday as well, that was something that Doug and Brian Longren, our, our aquatics team, really started to kind of get their heads around. And it, it's really kind of difficult to figure out how exactly many people could fit in that space, given that kind of social distancing. But what we've kind of put it at, you know, with family units and all that stuff, we believe that anywhere from three hundred to three hundred and fifty people could be in the aquatic center at any given time and still maintain social distancing. Obviously, if it was all bunches of family units that were all kind of congregated together, that we could probably get a little bit more. But we really felt like that was kind of the, the number we're looking at. Three hundred would be if we didn't use the lazy river, just because the lazy river would be a, a very difficult facility to social distance around. But if we wanted to find a way to make that work, it'd be about three hundred and fifty at any given time. And kind of way we've looked at it in a way that would try to hopefully get as many people in there as possible. If this is something we wanted to look at is maybe just having people reserve a two hour block. So maybe there's a two hour block in the morning and a two hour block in the afternoon, where we would allow three hundred to three hundred and fifty people into the aquatic center, they swim and then they're done for the day. That gives it, then we do a little bit of cleaning time in between there and then allow another three hundred to three hundred and fifty people in the afternoon. I'll find a, a way that we can maybe offer that service. Some of the difficulty of that will be, will be finding enough lifeguards. You know, we, we told them that we didn't need them. We know there was a few that we probably need for swimming lessons, but not the quantity. The college is starting early, would also make it more difficult as well. And so I think there's ways to do that, that, that we can make it work. It just, I think at this point, really the, the only difficulty is can we get enough lifeguards rounded up here in, in a time to get that going? Also too, I do want to say, just because the pool is one of the few things that we do that we have to be a hundred percent perfect at. We, we can't have any mistakes. And so training of that staff and, and making sure they're fully up on training and the ability to be watching people in the pool and, and doing rescues is very important. So we need about a four week lead, lead time to get that going. So from today, probably the earliest we could open is the week after Independence Day. If we really, really pushed on that, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. So we might get three weeks in by the time the college kids bailed, if we're able to find enough, enough lifeguards. We'd probably know pretty quickly after we start reaching out if that's something we could do. But there will be some challenges to something like that.
So Richard, that, so that's, that's if we did full operations.
Yes, correct.
Well, with swim lessons, you could manage that and manage a forty two day season. And with some other activities with swimming collaboration, with swim team collaborations, et cetera. But we're talking full operation and full operation with three hundred, three hundred and fifty people, social distancing, does that include employees?
Yes, yep, yeah. And we also, we only, we actually believe that we probably need even an additional staff member or two just to help make sure we enforce that social distancing. The lifeguards can't be, can't be doing that, they have to make sure that all, all the patrons in the pools are safe. So we anticipate probably a couple of additional people that could help, help kind of keep people spaced out as well as help with some of that deep cleaning in between things as well.
It, it sounds, not to speak for anybody, but it sounds to me like the swim lessons collaboration is the desired path for management, costs, labor and timing. Is that a fair assessment, Richard?
We'll try to do whatever the, the council desires. I mean, I just can't guarantee that we could get enough lifeguards together to, to make that work. We're certainly, if the council wants to find a way to, to make that work, we'll certainly do our best to kind of shake all the corners and see if those lifeguards are out there and see if we can get them to come back into the fold. But I think it, from, yeah, lessons and some of that other program would probably be the, the easiest at this, at this point. But we're certainly willing to try whatever the, the council would like us to do.
I think that's where it's important, I mean Weaver is a wrinkle. Weaver said he didn't want to be a wrinkle in this, he always is a wrinkle.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, but Meredith, I think, is the wrinkle. She brought up a really good point and that her swimmers are all lifeguard, are certified lifeguards. I think that's obvious partnership, right? Is if we can work out something, they can, you know, work back with us on that piece, I think it's a win-win. Then I, I might entertain it. I, I guess I'm a little more nervous both financially and as well as I'm yet not a believer that this is over, right? That this whole COVID thing is over. But if we went into it slowly, that's why I paused when you asked for responses.
Well, beyond whether it's over or not, and, and I get that concern. And, and this is purely anecdotal and I fully admit that. But there are a lot of teenagers out there, they're, they're looking for work. And so the idea that, yeah, that we can't find lifeguards, I, I just don't, I, I'm not convinced of that. So I'm going to push back on that a little bit. You know, if we can start right after the Fourth of July, that, that's a month out, that would give us basically six weeks of the aquatic center being open. And I think that would do a lot for the morale of the community. And I, I know I was on the other side of this before and, and I get that, but I don't know. I mean, I, I'm just hearing from a lot of folks and with, and I was against it before, but with the governor, governor's change to where the outdoor, now with the outdoor restrictions being changed, I, I've kind of changed my tune on this. Now, the one thing I don't know, and this is, I guess where I need to have a better, better understanding from, from you, Richard or, or Matt, is the financials. So you're, because I had no idea about the numbers. So you're saying three hundred to three fifty, so, so that, that's good information. What is, how does that translate financially to us? If it means, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in loss, then okay, I'm still with you. If we're talking about a minimal loss, then in my opinion, it's worth it for the community. So I guess I want to understand that.
Yeah, you know, we don't, we don't have the exact numbers on this, but in just kind of the twenty four hours we've had to kind of, kind of look through this, we believe that if we could average approximately six hundred patrons per day. So if we were able to get three hundred in the morning session and three hundred in the afternoon session, that along with the swimming lessons and some of the other potential rentals and programming, that we could come pretty close to break even. But that's pretty much a perfect day every single day, which we know wouldn't occur. So I, I think we'd still be looking at the neighborhood of the, you know, maybe thirty to forty to fifty thousand dollars in that neighborhood without knowing what the weather is going to be and, and how difficult it'd be to find lifeguards to, that, that could work those.
Right.
And then I'll also, I want to mention one other thing about kind of costs. And as part of the discussion Matt and I had this morning about, would we still be able to charge people the same amount we normally would if we'd only allow them to be in there for a couple hours? So it's something, you know, we'd maybe have to even look at, like if you reduce the, the daily fee, if you only get to use it for a couple hours.
Yeah, no, and that's a great point and, and I totally agree with that. You know, we had the same challenge with Walnut Creek Baseball, right? Like, are we refunding the full amount, a, a certain percentage of the amount? For people that want to register late, are we charging them the full amount? You know, but at the end of the day, it's, it's, in my opinion, we have to provide these outlets to our residents because people are clamoring for it. And so I just feel like we got to find a way to make it work, as long as it's not crippling from a financial standpoint. So that, that's my opinion, obviously others are going to have their opinion, so I'll let them speak.
Well, obviously, you know, to your point of, of that, of losing lifeguards fast, and this is no kidding, I just interviewed three young folks for, to start working this Monday, this coming Monday. One of them that I hired, I hired all three, one of them was a lifeguard, couldn't find work. And so they're working at the landfill this year. You know, I don't know how many of those are out there, but I'm not giving you his name.
I know a two in my neighborhood just specifically, so there you go.
Well, Ted, to your point, we have to be able to provide as much as we can in a safe manner, in an economically efficient manner. So it's a, it's a, it's a quite a tight balance that we have to strike here. I'm sensing that, that swimming lessons collaborations that we have, we have generally unanimity on that. Now the question of do we go to full operation for a fairly short season with potential labor shortages? That's the other question, but, but I guess what I need to understand in this format, which is difficult to do, is, you know, are we open to a, to a, a full scale opening with the restrictions that, that Richard has outlined for us?
I'll speak up and say no. And it, I don't think there'd be any trouble at all finding lifeguards. You might even find adults interested in doing it. But I cannot fathom how you manage the distancing that's still required. There are still those restrictions, it's not no restriction on pools. So I, I just think that's just too hard to manage outside of.
Well, we're doing it, we're doing it at every little league across the metro and we're doing it in various other places. So I don't know why a pool would be any different and the governor's opened up the pool. So it's no different than every other outdoor facility.
I think it's very different and I'm a big swimmer. You know, I was on swim team, dive team, lived at the pool. So I absolutely understand the desire that people have. But I'm very familiar with how it works when kids are in a pool and I, I don't see a way that it can be managed.
Well, thanks Susan, and you're offering your opinion and your thoughts and that's what we're asking for. Because that's going to give us the direction that we need, so.
Yeah, that's right.
So I guess I'm interested in each of, and just heard from Susan, if you swim, we'll just call it swim lessons for like just short term there and/or full operation, are you for it?
Mayor, this is Eric and I want to weigh in a little bit. I certainly appreciate the comments that Susan made and also, also Ted, I think they both have good points. I, I tend to shy away from full scale opening for a couple of different reasons. One is that we are in really a, a crunch timeline right now. I understand Ted's point about baseball, but I do think there is a difference. And, and especially, you know, swimming is a life or death situation, it certainly can be. And I think you have to get it right with, with really our condensed timeline on here. I'm, I, I just don't want to, I don't, I would rather err on the set of caution than rush into a situation where you've got a lot of people in an enclosed area and, and, you know, you, we'd have to go through and find those lifeguards, get them accredited, certified. I just think it's, 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 it's a very risky situation for the city and for the citizens right there. I for one am in favor of, of swimming lessons and some collaborations that we discussed, but I, I'm not overly comfortable with opening up the pool up and rushing into something that's a very important decision.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Ted, I think I know, we, we know where you're at, Michael?
I, I would be similar to that for a few different reasons, but I'd be similar to that and to, to Susan's. I, I, part of me says to open, you know, people may need to make the right decisions on their own. I, would I go to the pool? No. You know, am I ready for a restaurant right tonight? No. But others are and they'll make their own decisions. And so that's where I am a little bit torn here, is allowing folks to make their own decision and doing that and us forcing that decision, but.
So the swimming lessons you're okay with, but you're questionable on a full scale opening?
I am.
Okay, thanks, Michael, John?
Well, let me just point to the Iowa State Fair. I think one of the big considerations they made was that they weren't going to be able to have the Iowa State Fair that everyone is used to and expecting. That combined with safety concerns give me a lot of pause as far as trying to go to full scale operations. I'm not sure we can pull it off in the manner in which the Clive way, so I'd be reluctant to do that.
Okay, thank you, John. Well, I think that gives us our direction, swimming lessons, collaborations. Richard, it's you and your team have done a lot of crunching here and I know you're creative. You know, let's figure out a way to at least offer those services and who knows what, what will come out of that for us and for our community. So it's a positive step forward. I know I have people asking me the same questions about swim lessons at Al. And so hopefully that gives you the direction that you need to move forward. And we look forward to, to quick updates and regular updates on your progress.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate the, the direction. You'll probably see us start to advertise swimming lessons as early as tomorrow to make sure we can get people enough time out there and start getting them signed up. So I appreciate the council's direction here and we'll, we'll get moving on it.
Thanks, Richard, for your great work. Matt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you on the overall update. Do you have other items that we need to talk about?
I'll keep that very brief on the middle, the middle item, just to indicate that with the June twenty ninth date that Richard alluded to for library and park and rec offices, we're thinking about a similar reopening of the city hall lobby as well as the public safety facility lobby. Again, with the same protocols of, of requiring masks and providing disposable masks. So I think at this point, considering the, the discussion tonight, we'll have more follow up. I'll have more follow-up for the council and kind of our, our detailed return to work plan in terms of the reopening aspects. And don't necessarily need to spend any more time tonight unless council has specific questions at this point.
I have a supplemental question related to reopening, and that's, that's our, that's our spring cleanup. Can you just refresh all of us on where we are on that today? And you know, at least we have a general timeframe of any developments there?
Yes, we weren't able to get any commitment from Waste Management to do the, the mayor's cleanup before the end of their contract, before, so the, before the end of June. And so we're now engaging with our new contractor as of July one, ASI. And they, just based on workload and transitioning to a bunch of new communities on July like us, they are willing to look at something towards the end of the summer. So what we would propose is we still have a mayor's cleanup this year, that we would utilize the resources. It, it would be no additional cost to us. And that we would have that in, we're shooting for, at least my last dialogue with, with Metro Waste Staff with Leslie is hopefully early, early September at this point.
And that'd be a best-case scenario?
That would be best-case scenario based on what information I have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Matt, for the update.
And Mr. Mayor, can I jump in on that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just want everybody. This is quite a undertaking with a lot of communities. And so I'm not, I don't want anyone to be alarmed, but I do think we should go into it slowly with open eyes of if the city should do one. Or if it should be canceled this year, what does that look like? I mean, lots of scenarios there. And, you know, you just pick it up next spring. There were openings of other facilities for folks to bring their things to during that time. Yes, personally, they had to bring them, and so there may be some other issues. But take a hard look at it. And I just wanted everybody not to leave tonight, you know, with an immediate, it's going to happen.
Mike, what's the reason for canceling it?
Pardon me?
What's the reason for canceling it, in your opinion?
Well, we may not, I mean, there just may not be a hauler that will be able to do it. And then haulers are worried also that, because we're going to, we can take it out to a bid process with the current hauler today, the new hauler on July one, or any hauler we wish, it could be bid. But they're all a little jumpy right now saying with it missed. How much stuff is out there? It could be the same, could be light, but it also could be very heavy. And so do we do it at the same rate? Or do, you know, there are a lot of pieces of that formula that are unknown right now, and we're trying to crunch those numbers here in the next day or two, hopefully by the end of tomorrow.
So Mike, just to clarify though, because what I'm hearing from Matt is that ASI would do it. It's a question of exactly when they would do it, but then it would not cost us to, to do it.
That's the presumption, right?
Be real clear on that, so.
Yeah. And so I think, I mean, Matt, that, that's Matt's. That's the message Matt's getting as well. And so he's telling you exactly what he's hearing. I'm just very leery right now from what we're hearing in, in other negotiations of what might be the ending negotiation of, yeah, we'll do it at the price today, but we want an assurance if it's, you know, five percent higher than the tonnage of the average last two years, you pay extra. You know, that type of thing might end up happening. And so, you know, sorry to jump in there and sideline this, I just didn't want any
No, this isn't important.
And then Matt, you know, the people, you know, then we all ask Matt what happened, but, yeah.
No, this is, this is good understanding because I'm getting asked about it almost daily.
Okay, well, that I think is a good note.
And, and I would anticipate that it would be heavier because everybody's been home cleaning their houses.
Yes, now saying that, you know, the landfill also had twelve, thirteen hundred cars coming to it versus six hundred on an average day pre-COVID. And so we over-doubled the landfill traffic in just personal vehicles were most of those. So that's what we're trying to figure out is, you're right, everybody's been home and cleaning everybody's home. And, but have they already gotten rid of it? Are they storing it, you know? Is it a, a neutral number, like a just a net neutral, you know, it's going to be the same? That's the terrible unknown right now because of what happened. And I just don't want you to get caught with some other number here in the next two or three days.
Yeah, understood. So what you're trying to suggest is stay tuned?
Stay tuned and, right. And, and I guess I just heard it from, you know, you and Ted that you're hearing from people that they want it, so that shows the need out there.
Absolutely. Okay, very good. Well, Matt.
No doubt.
Yeah, please, please keep us posted on that. This is an important service that our, that our residents are used, and they're used to paying for it. You know, as, as part of our rate, and I can't remember the last time we didn't do one. This year, of course, is an anomaly, but you know, this, this tugs at people. So I know we're all taking it very seriously, but I'm more in tune to having one than not having one. And we're just going to have to work hard to try to make sure that happens.
Yes, that, those new numbers were being shared via email at around five fifteen tonight. So that's why Matt, you know, he had the most current information until that time. But, you know, I, I fully expect, you know, we need to push the current vendor today that, to reconsider doing it at the cost they agreed to.
Well, I agree. And we'll appreciate your help in that effort. Okay. Matt, I know I threw one there here at the end. Anything else on updates?
No, that's, related to that then, that, you know, we're also looking at, we, we bundled brush pickup is another one of these services. You know, we already publicized that in the fall for a fall bundled brush pickup. And so staff is operating under the assumption that since we published that, we advertise that, we're also working with Metro Waste on that to at least this fall complete the bundled brush cycle for this year. And then bring that back to council for conversation later this summer about whether that's a service we continue going forward. Because that was one, the one of the things that was not, that is not in the contract going forward that we have had previously. We're one of the only communities that does that anymore. And obviously, we've got the yard waste program now, that's, that's much more fully involved. But just again, don't need any answer to that, but just wanted to give an FYI. There, there's a couple beyond this mayor's cleanup, there's also that as well that we're working on currently. But that's all I have, Your Honor, for this one. And then just wanted to move on to the last item. And I will, our, everybody's favorite subject, I know, related to bridge jumping at Campbell Park. So included in the packet, a memo that the chief put together just on kind of the law enforcement options. And I think there's a couple of key things that I want to make sure we get clarity from the council tonight. Number one, the chief and I have been operating under the assumption of, or basically the intent of the ordinance that, and we kind of emphasize it in bold, that, and I want to make sure I get clarity from the council on this, is the count, the, the ordinance was written in a way, at least we believe, that the climbing of the bridge was only restricted or prohibited, climbing on the bridge was restricted or prohibited so as to obstruct the street, the bridge, trail crossing. I, I'm, I'm getting some feel that that might not have been the intent of the council in 2017, that there was a, that the climbing restriction did apply regardless of the obstruction, that it, that it was really a thought process of, of limiting, you know, maybe the bridge, the, the jumping on the bridge. Again, this is the law enforcement side of this. From the non-law enforcement side, we wanted to, at a staff level, to give them some ideas and options if, if the council wasn't interested in changing where our ordinance is at today or if we need further clarification on the current language. We've, talking with parks and rec staff, we've tried to make some contact with the folks out there, with the kids out there, get to know them a little bit better, try to provide some more clearing on other, on the sides of the bridge and the grass areas to encourage them then to not congregate on the bridge. When they're in the midst of jumping off the bridge. So we're trying to provide some other options, looking at our rec staff actually getting to know them a little bit so we can better understand, is this a regular group of kids? And making sure that they're aware of, 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 you know, some of the concerns that could be there in terms of when you're, you know, jumping into that water, especially when we have high, high water events and you have, you don't know what's in that water sometimes, right? So those are some non-law enforcement items that we're looking at. We wanted to throw that out there. The chief has already increased trail patrols, bike patrols in the area. But we really wanted to get some feedback from the council on this, both on clarity of the current ordinance. And basically, is, is the council at a point where they want to change direction on this at all in terms of going to the full ban on jumping? Or is this some other approach that you'd like us to consider? So again, I don't, I don't really have any more to say because the memo kind of outlines at least some of the law enforcement options. But we'd really love some dialogue and some direction from the council on this one.
Mayor Councilman Weaver has his hand up and waving.
Go ahead, Ted.
Well, shocking. So my interpretation of the ordinance has always been, and my recollection of our previous dialogue when we first passed this ordinance was that the language of the ordinance said that you could not climb on the bridge. And that was a mechanism for prohibiting the jumping off the bridge without specifically articulating that. And I guess I would like to hear from our legal counsel. Because I, I, I think that the police interpretation, and I don't mean this in a, this, you know, a disparaging way, but I think the police and, and the city manager's interpretation is different than what my interpretation is. And so I just would like to hear from our legal counsel as to what her interpretation is of the ordinance, as to whether it's okay to climb on the bridge based off of the verbiage of the ordinance.
Madam Counsel, any thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor and Councilmember Weaver. We've had some discussion and exchange about this over the years. And today I did take the opportunity to go back and listen and, and read our meeting minutes from June twenty-second of 2017 and July thirteenth of 2017. And went through the, the amendments that were made to the versions of the ordinance. And while I believed the intent was as described by Ted Weaver, Councilmember Weaver here, that yes, the idea was, you know, perhaps there's good clean fun there. The biggest concern at the time was really focused on the obstruction of persons on the trail. I think the bottom line here is the ordinance as it reads, if it's causing confusion, I think that it is certainly a recommended course of action to either tighten that up or clarify that at this time. Clearly, there's confusion with the phrase as to obstructing, you know, whether that's a qualifying phrase for climbing. It was always my impression that climbing was prohibited, period. I could see how it could be read differently. Have we had this challenged in court or interpreted by a court of law? No. And if an ordinance is clear on its face, we don't get into legislative intent. That being said, this council has an opportunity tonight to provide clarity on what you would like to do. Clearly, there's some concerns, and the chief and the city manager and I are all ears.
Yeah, thank you, Council. I, yeah, I appreciate that. So, I mean, here, here's my thought on this. You know, I, I think the intent originally was that we were trying to not allow climbing on the bridge or bridges across the city from a safety perspective without actually calling out the, the actual function of jumping. And I think what, what's happened is that with the police and the way they've been enforcing it is saying that based off of their interpretation of the ordinance, that it's legal to climb on and then therefore jump off the bridge. And so individually, as a teenager, I can, I can climb on the bridge and I can jump off of it with no repercussion whatsoever because not only is the police telling me it's okay, but they're basically endorsing it in many ways. And so as an individual, it's okay. But what's happening is collectively, we're getting all of them as a group to do this because it's been endorsed or sanctioned almost by the city. Because the police are saying, hey, it's okay. And so we're getting these groups that are all thinking as an individual. But again, collectively, it's causing a problem. And so I think we need to tighten that up so that it's not being sanctioned by the city. Because I think that is the way these teenagers are perceiving it based off what they're being told by the police. And I've had parents tell me that directly, that the police are saying it's just fine that they can do this.
Yeah, so Ted, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here as well. And I've had this conversation before with Matt and the chief and maybe even Christina. But that's my recollection of, of why we did what we did at the time. I don't know why we're afraid to say, don't jump off the bridge. Councilmember Edwards just presented us with a lawsuit that is fully in play right now for liability. And I understand kids want to have fun, but we've got a liability there if we're allowing them to jump off of this bridge. And we've been debating it in public meetings for some time now. I think we have an ordinance that's not clear. Clearly, we don't want kids jumping off this, this bridge, or any bridge, inclined for that matter. And I don't know why we're afraid to not just address that. I know we want kids to have fun, but it's, it's dangerous, and there's just no two ways about that. So that's, that's for the record, that's where I stand. Other council members?
I'm with you, Mayor, on that. Sorry, my hand is not working. I'm on a Macintosh tonight. But I agree, I think we need to revise the ordinance. I think we need to ban climbing or jumping. We do not need to get to the point in hindsight where someone is seriously injured or killed as a result of jumping off the bridge, and there is a high risk of that happening. So I think we need to get it revised, make it clear, get signs posted and move this along quickly. It's early in the summer, we need to nip this in the bud.
This is Eric. I would agree, clearly, the ordinance is really very, very vague. And, you know, it sends mixed messages to both the, the kids jumping off the bridge and, and our police forces trying to enforce it. I, I think we need to revise it. I think we need to clearly tighten it up. And, you know, if a council, if our will is to ban this activity, which it sounds like it is, then we need to, we, we need to jump both feet into the pool and, and not just one.
No pun intended. Thank you, Eric. Susan? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I completely agree. I had wanted to ban jumping from the beginning. Just having known people who've been injured terribly in swimming pool accidents and other similar things. So I think it's a no-brainer. And it's further complicated this year by the fact that they're not distancing. Sorry to keep beating a drum about that, but it's, it's just a bad idea all around.
It's a big problem, Susan, down there. I mean, trying to get across that bridge with those kids, I don't know if you've been down there, but it, it's terrible.
Yeah, I hear a lot of that. Yeah, I hear a lot of that. Uh, others, Michael? Mike, do you have a?
No, I, I would fully support that. I think at the last debate we had in the council chambers, it was a bit all over the board on how it should be enforced. And so I think, uh, Mike is probably enforcing it kind of how we asked for it to be enforced in, in some ways. Ambiguous, you know, answers. So get rid of the work crossing, get rid of that, let's tighten it up. I'm just tired of it, right? I mean, I'll say before I was probably, uh, one of them that said that, yeah, I'm okay with it, you know, within reason, da, 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 da. But right now it's just, it's, I'm tired of it. They don't, aren't respecting others, they're not respecting the property. Let's just get rid of it and give a clear message from the police, uh, to start sending the message down there.
Matt, Christina, uh, I think that you have your direction.
We will prepare, uh, an ordinance for consideration at the next meeting.
And wave, I mean, hopefully.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if, if the council wants to, to move on this, which it sounds like you all do unanimously. We will bring it forward for, and waving the readings and move quickly on this.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I think we have to, but I, I guess I just, my, my question is for the chief is, is how, how challenging is this to enforce? Even if we change the ordinance?
It is much easier to, to stand when someone jumps off the creek, we, or jumps off the bridge. We could be there and watch it. The challenge has been for us that has not to language. That, uh, my feeling on your intention was it was, it was good clean fun for kids to jump off the bridge as long as they weren't blocking the trail. When we would go down, the kids would be cooperative. We would remind them to move off the trail and they would do so, but next time it was a different group. We are very willing to go down and enforce it. There is, I'm sure there will be some people upset based on the fact that it's been allowed for a number of years. And suddenly it, it isn't, but, uh, we appreciate the clarity and, uh, will, uh, will enforce it accordingly. I'll work with, uh, parks on appropriate signage, indestructible signage. And, uh, we will, we will hit it hard and, and early.
Well, I think, I think chief, thank you for that. This is an important point. I, I'm supportive of, of how that department has enforced this up to now based on, based on how the ordinance is written. I, I get that and Ted makes a really important point that when kids hear that it's not illegal to jump off a bridge. Because technically it's not the way this ordinance is written, that they feel that, that it's legal. Well, now we start to educate that it's not legal anymore. We, that we understand the liability that's involved here, uh, among other things that we don't, we just don't want kids getting hurt. Um, and that it is, it is illegal now, uh, that we start educating from that perspective and we see how we do. I think we want to, uh, to stay very close to the language of don't be blocking the trail. And don't be jumping off the bridge. These are two pretty simple, pretty simple ideas. And I'm, I'm convinced that we can, that we can enforce it from an educational perspective and have cooperative kids. And, um, you know, that, that way we're putting our best foot forward.
Mayor, I think you just said it, but summed it up best is the education side. And I think, uh, Mike and the, and the entire police force has done a fantastic job on other issues. We've asked him to enforce on those warnings, right? And so maybe those first week is a warning after we put it into effect. That kind of the snow ordinance and some other things we've done. And after we did the warnings for snow, I haven't heard anybody, right? They got warned, uh, so let's do a week of warning or something and then just hit them with the tickets.
We can certainly set up an enforcement plan.
I agree with that a hundred percent and, um.
Word will travel fast.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, with the aquatic center being closed, I get why the kids are going down there, right? So I, I don't want to dissuade that because what they're doing down there is good fun for teenagers. They should be doing stuff. I'd rather be them, I'd rather them be down there doing those kinds of things than other things, right? So, but Matt, I mean, your option five had kind of an option of, you know, an, an area where the kids could. Congregate and go in the, the creek and what have you. I mean, I, I would like us to pursue that maybe, let's look at that. Let's, let's try to provide a, a better area for them at the bridge, maybe where they can, you know, congregate. But just not where they're jumping off the bridge and we're not providing a platform for them to jump off the bridge. Because that brings a whole nother set of liability issues. But is there something we can do from the city perspective to provide them more of an area where they can hang out and congregate around the bridge? That doesn't interfere with people crossing the bridge? I, I don't know, but.
Ted, I'm gonna speak real quickly, uh, because we, we've talked about this option for a long time. We just haven't done it yet and that's the idea of repairing. And the repairing, repairing part concept and getting people down to the water, uh, down to the creek. And, and a, in a, in a unique, um, uh, unique way. Uh, and that's just planning and that's, we've talked about it before, we just haven't done it yet. There, there's certainly a way to do that, um, and.
Well, let's expedite that, right? Let's not, let's not put that off for the next two years. Let's, let's try to look at that right now where we can do that to help them. Even if it's something that's maybe not perfect, but that, you know, something temporary for now. That, hey, here's an alternative for you guys to do without jumping off the bridge, right?
Yeah, and I would also add that with, you know, with the triad projects coming online, you know, we're, we're looking at a pretty significant investment. In that very spot as well with everything that we're talking about. So I know that's a little longer term, I know we're looking for something this summer, but, but we could kind of keep that perspective in mind. But, uh, no, great, it's, it's, let's, let's see what comes before us here.
Your honor, if I could chime in on that, I think one of the, one of the things that we talked about in terms of the non-law enforcement options. Is, is trying to find, um, a way to clear some of that space, maybe down by the creek. For that, for exactly what Ted's talking about, it doesn't have to be perfect, right? It's, 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 you know, something maybe we can.
Absolutely.
I know that we've, uh, they've had a, uh, some kids installed a rope swing down there somewhere. That was away from the bridge and they were, they were jumping in the water with that, not in the deep spot. So, um, I think allow, allow us a park and rec team, let's, we'll put our heads together, we'll see if we can get creative on this. And maybe find a way to, once, once the ordinance is in place, we're providing another option, um, versus obviously.
Yeah, I just like to, yeah, I just like to encourage that kind of stuff, Matt, right? Because it's all good that they're down there, that's great, right? Let's just, as long as they're not blocking the bridge and blocking everyone's ability to enjoy the green belt and endangering themselves and others. Let's encourage that kind of stuff, right? It's good.
I think we need to encourage them to go to Ted Weaver's backyard.
Well, I don't know about that.
Good, I think we've spent, um, significant time on this topic. I hope the council's comfortable with direction. Matt, you have it, um, let's move forward with that and, and looking forward to, uh. The quick decisive, uh, actions, uh, action steps. So we're going to move to reports now and wrap this session up. I'm going to start with Pete.
Thank you, your honor, I'll be very quick. Postcards will be going out, uh, next week, if not even just a little bit sooner than that. And Katie, when the pickup dates are going to be for the new old carts and then your new cart showing up. Working closely with administrative services and our partners at Waste Management to make sure that post communications are clear. We've got a game plan in place to be able to field the questions as we can receive them. Some of the early posts have been very popular and it seems like it's getting around on the, on, via Facebook. We have sold now over 440 goat items, which is exciting. And we're very happy to report that the masks and the gray shirts, they're procreating funds for Clive Community Services. Are, are part of that 440 total and they are proving to be popular as well. We are going to go ahead with a limited number of signs as well to, as one more way that we can keep building community morale. And remind people how important it is as we go into this next phase of the pandemic. To keep doing the work to stay healthy, keep doing the work to stay healthy. We've made good progress and we don't want to lose that progress. Finally, the, um. Earlier this week, earlier today, the mayor and I, uh, the mayor gave an interview to Channel Five specifically talking about the 1988 racist communication. That was a very thoughtful release that the mayor and councilman Edwards and Matt and I, we worked on very carefully. And it was, uh, at least in that interview, very well received by the reporter. The article, the, uh, the piece will be running tonight on ABC Five at 10, so we'll watch for that. I would expect that that may generate some more interest in the story, but at this point I think our statements have been very clear. And we've been, uh, unwavering in our absolute rejection as a city of systemic racism. And, and solid, and we, and our communications to folks that we are ready to be partners with others to root it out and to do better moving forward. Not only in our police policies, but in all different aspects of the city's work as we strive to serve people well.
Pete, thank you. Um, councilors, are there questions for Pete? Hearing none, we're going to move to Ted.
Nothing good, Mayor.
Are you sure?
I'm sure I've had enough tonight.
Good, I'm glad you agree. With that, we'll move to Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, uh, CDB is revising their budgetary projections based upon hotel, motel tax. And, uh, some, some other formulas, had a chance to participate in the chamber cleanup betrayal program as well. That's it.
Excellent, thank you Eric. John?
I'll pass.
Thank you, John. Susan?
Well, I just want to make sure everybody knows that the North Raccoon Watershed Management Coalition. Is looking at approving or not. The watershed plan that is being brought forward for consideration in July. And the northern counties have been convinced by they. Well, one person who's been representing one of the counties of some information that isn't really accurate. That has convinced them that they should cut off the Walnut Creek portion of the North Raccoon, which would include Clive. So it's going to be interesting to see how this all plays out. The Iowa Economic Development Authority has been overseeing grant that was provided to provide staff and. Accomplished projects. And so they've written this letter that gives five different options for what might occur with reformulating the. Watershed, but I don't know, we probably need to have some more conversation about it outside of this meeting. But I wanted to make sure everyone's aware. I have reported to all of you what happened at this week's Bravo Board Meeting. Where it was announced that all staff are taking furloughs and one position is being eliminated. And, um, I guess there.
Susan, thank you. Questions for citizen council? Okay, we'll move to Michael.
Just one thing off my committee, but under the cart distribution, uh, postcard that'll be coming out. You have gotten some questions like I have on which carts and how's it going to happen? Remember when you're talking to your neighbors and constituents, it's just the solid waste cart that is being replaced. This rounds, but not to expect everything to be replaced. It would just be that solid waste, it'll be the same day in, in most cases. Uh, and a different, slightly different color, so it'll be much easier to even track your garbage versus your recyclables. But some people are thinking that it's all carts are being replaced and that is not the case.
That's a great point.
When will, when will the recycle be done?
Uh, recycle will, uh, be done in, new contract in two years. And depending on who wins that contract will depend on if the recycling carts get replaced. The second card should be still in good shape. If they're not, they can call our office and get, uh, or city hall and get a new one at any time if it's broken.
Good, good information. Thanks, Michael. Matt, we're going to move down to you.
Thank you, your honor, just a couple of quick things. Last couple of days I sat on, um, Des Moines Water Works and then the mayor did as well, interview panel for the CEO candidates. Which was a, was good to do that and be able to weigh in on that for the board of trustees. Also this morning, uh, participated in a cost of service study presentation. High level, uh, and I'll give some more specifics in terms of some presentations in my report tomorrow that I'll send to you. Water Works is, is wrestling with some, some changes related to cost of service and how wholesale rates are charged. They had, um, some specific evidence showing that the rates, the way the rate structure has been set up between Des Moines retail customers. Their, their full service customers and then the purchase capacity or wholesale customers. That essentially the other customers are subsidizing the purchase capacity customers to varying degrees. Again, they didn't say that that was going to be a direct reflection of what, where they may take rates. It just reemphasizes the importance of the regionalization, uh, conversation. Um, and we'll have more to come on that as hopefully those discussions start to fire back up now. They kind of took a pause because of the pandemic and, and the inability to get folks together. But I think it's going to definitely drive the need for us to keep moving forward with that. A mix amidst the Des Moines Water Works discussions on, um, their current rate structure. So more to come on that, but just wanted to make the council aware. And then, uh, finally just to want to acknowledge, you know, my appreciation to, to, to all of you in terms of your support. As me serving as your city manager, uh, I, I love this community and love this organization and staff and the team. Working with all of you to lead this community forward and, uh, appreciate the trust that you, you place in me. So very much so, so thank you, your honor.
Matt, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, council questions for Matt? Okay, hearing none. Council, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn us at 10:50 PM. Nice work, everybody. Thank you.